But I'm gonna start with this. As Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School Committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota.
Here.
Mary Branley.
Here.
Hillary Griffiths.
Here.
Natasha Rivera.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Here.
Jeff Ferranti.
Here.
Is Jen Gaudette, there you are.
Here.
Charles Gabron.
Here.
Brian Haas.
Here.
Do we have Wayne with us tonight?
No.
No, okay. I anticipated guest speakers on the agenda tonight. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Principal Barth.
Here.
Oh, Wayne, there is Wayne White. Wayne White.
Wayne's here listening. If we need him.
Okay.
Phone a friend.
Principal Karagianis.
I am here.
I don't see, do you see? Principal Karagianis, okay. Not yet. And Principal Caruso, do we know if he's coming?
No.
Principal Rulo. No, okay. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely as allowed by the Act Governor Baker signed into law on June 16th, 2021, an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency includes an extension until April 1st of 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of his March 12th, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The new law has two major parts. First, the new law allows public bodies to continue to providing live adequate alternative means of public access to the deliberations of the public body instead of holding meetings in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public. Second, the new law authorizes all members of a public body to continue participating in meetings remotely. The open meeting laws requirement that a quorum of the body and the chair be physically present at the meeting location remains suspended. All other provisions of the open meeting law and regulations such as the requirements regarding posting notice of meetings and creating and maintaining accurate meeting minutes remain in effect. Public bodies are reminded that notice of all meetings must be posted at least 48 hours in advance, not including weekends and holidays, and the meeting notice must clearly specify how the public may access the meeting, whether in person, remote, or both. This meeting is convening via Zoom. Video conference is posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating via video conference. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, please let the chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so. Raise your hand now in, at the bottom, and I will check to see if you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting. I do not see any hands raised. I'm going to assume no one is broadcasting or recording. Most of the supporting materials have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in a folder titled 2021-2022 Agendas, under the tab Agendas, under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the chair notes otherwise. Citizens comments, any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during a virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to commentsforscmeeting@maynard.k12.ma.us. And Colleen, can you put that in the chat for everyone? Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the citizens' comments agenda item is addressed. Please include public comment in the subject line and your full name and street address in the body of your email. Emails without this information cannot be read. To ensure that your statement is read in its entirety, a 30, 350-word limit is suggested. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark in the interest of time, but will be submitted in its entirety for the public record. Comments are limited to three minutes or 350 words to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. The chair will read only one statement from each citizen. However, citizens can submit any additional comments for the public record by providing a copy to the chair via email up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included in the public record. Please be aware that the purpose of the citizens' comments period is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the community it serves. As such, the protocol supports the unidirectional public sharing of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Before we go to the first agenda, item on the agenda permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda, and after the speaker concludes their remarks, I will ask each member in turn if they have a single comment, question, or motion that they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold off speaking until your name is called, and remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please do not interrupt anyone who is speaking and cease speaking if the chair requests you to do so. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So I just want to make a note of the ground rules. So I've been reading a lot of Robert's Rules of Order, and our ground rules actually do not reflect what it says, and until we amend our bylaws, we technically, each member is allowed to speak twice on each topic, and each member is allowed to speak up to 10 minutes each time. So I just wanted to make that clear because if we are going to try to do everything properly, I want everyone to know what, what we've been doing wrong and how we need to correct it. So, roll call vote to enter the meeting. Elizabeth Albota. Mary Branley.
Here.
Natasha Rivera.
Here.
Hillary Griffiths. Whoop, she's muted.
Or yes, I guess, sorry. We did the years earlier.
Okay, and Lydia Clancy, yes, the meeting is now in session. We are going to start with citizens' comments. Do we have any, Colleen?
No, we do not.
Okay. Next, we're going on to urgent business. Superintendent Haas, do we have urgent business?
Yes, Madam Chair, one item I'd like to bring up under urgent business, just to get it on the record tonight for, really for further discussion and a vote at our next meeting on the 23rd, which would be, and I bring it up as an emergency because it's time sensitive, that just really came about in the last day or so, which would be in spring, I recommended when you approved temporarily, if you will, the out-of-state music trip to Disney in Florida. And you approved it provisionally, sort of pending where things were in fall, knowing that in fall, there would be some hard deadlines for deposits. So we're at that time now where it's September, and they've done good planning. I mean, so this is no, this is not a negative reflection on the music students program or anything. We really love the program, and this is a great opportunity. However, given COVID and travel and variants and everything, and the fact that money will need to be put on the table next month, and it starts to become non-refundable in mid-October, I'll do a little more work on my end in terms of meeting with music people. But pending any unforeseen information coming forward, I think that I would make the recommendation that we rescind the approval for that trip for this year and view it as an opportunity to do two years of fundraising so that we can have students pay significantly less in 2023 and plan on going then when the COVID issues are not as rampant as they are. And so I have two, those are my two concerns, one being non-refundable money for our families, which is approaching very quickly, and the state of Florida is not, in my reading and understanding of the news, the safest place to be right now. And I would hate to not address this in a timely manner and have anybody lose out in one way or another. So really, it was just to put it on the record tonight, and then revisit it on the 23rd.
However, I believe they wanted to have an answer before the 17th. So I don't.
And I'm okay making that, like, I mean, sorry, man, I'm trying to.
No, it's okay. I'm just, I'm just saying, since our next meeting isn't until the 23rd, and they would like to have an answer by the 17th, we may need to call a special meeting just to vote on this one thing.
If I may?
Yes.
I don't think there will actually be a lot more information regarding this if the committee, you know, is comfortable, given the fact that there's non-refundable deposits due in October, and it's in the state of Florida, and COVID, we just don't know what we don't know. Honestly, I think we'll know much more in two weeks.
Uh oh, can't hear you. Uh oh, you're muted.
Muted.
Colleen muted you.
Sorry, I went to admit someone and hit mute next to you. Jen was too fast.
Okay. I was just gonna say, I don't think there will be a lot of new information in the next two or three weeks, given the non-refundable amounts in the state of Florida and the variance with COVID. I'm comfortable making the recommendation to not have this out-of-state trip this year. And if the committee's comfortable, they can take that as a vote, you know, take it under the vote.
All right, I will open up the Florida comments and go around. Elizabeth, do you have anything to say or any questions to ask?
No.
No. Mary Branley.
Nope.
Hillary Griffiths.
Um, I have questions. Um, what grades typically go and how often do they go? Basically trying to get at, are we taking away the opportunity for particular kids to ever go? And then what month is the trip typically, what month is the trip scheduled for? And are there any opportunities or options for travel insurance that would cover COVID cancellations?
So I'm gonna actually, I saw Principal Karagianis raises his hand because he knows the answers better than I do for those particular questions, great questions. Principal Karagianis?
So the trip is typically done every four years. We go to, typically, the music program goes to Washington. And two years later, they go to Disney, then two years later, they go back to Washington DC to a music competition. So that's the frequency. It grades, it's grades nine to 12, including the chorus and band. The trip is typically in April. My understanding of trip insurance is that if the trip is canceled due to something like flights can't go or the state of Florida declares an emergency and you can't go, then your insurance kicks in. However, if flights are flying and Disney World is open and Florida says you can stay in a hotel, even though we may deem it unsafe, that is not gonna kick in your travel insurance because theoretically, you could go if you wanted to, and it's your choice. So that's my understanding of how trip insurance works. I think to the superintendent's point, I don't know what Florida's gonna be like in April of 2022. The numbers might be down, the numbers might be up, the numbers might be about the same. I suspect that the government of Florida, based on their performance to date, is not gonna be an entity that cancels anything ever. So I think it will be up to us and Maynard to make the decision as to what's safe or not safe. Because I don't think the current administration in Florida is going to do anything to say that people can't come, no matter what their circumstances are.
Have there been any, has there been any input from the families whose children wouldn't be able to go at all? As far as, like, are they begging to pay the deposit and wait? Or are they pretty consistently recognizing Florida's not a safe place to go right now?
So in fairness, I think this has emerged in just the couple, last couple of days. So I'm not sure that there's been an opportunity for people to comment as they might want to. So I really can't gauge what the sentiment of the group is as a whole. Having said that, in my experience, you will hear from the people who desperately want to go, and you'll hear from the people who desperately don't want to go, and there'll be a group of people who don't say much at all and are really looking to guidance from the school committee. So, but that's, that's my opinion. That's, you know, that's not the opinion of the body. Also, to be completely fair, there will be a group of students, the graduating class of 2022, the current seniors, who will not have had an opportunity to go to Disney. Last year's group of students actually were at Maynard High School as eighth graders, and before the eighth grade moved back to the Fowler, and they, because they were in the building, were able to go to Disney. And presuming that the trips can resume in '23, those students will be able to go as well. So there is a singular group of students, the current seniors, who will not have had the opportunity.
Um, the other thing too, Hillary, is they, the Music Association is having their, or the, the band, the band trip committee is having a meeting tonight while we have our meeting. And that's part of why this came up today, because Cindy Blanchard contacted me about this and sent information to me and Superintendent Haas, and so this is all just rapidly evolved, which is why it's urgent business.
Actually, I have a question too. The question I had is, if we cancel it this year, would it be rescheduled for next year? Or would it go back to the old schedule?
We would, we would reschedule for next year and then start cycling from there. So it would be Washington two years after that.
All right, Natasha.
Some, one is procedural. So what, I know we had proved this in the spring, so I guess we would be, would we be amending, or how do we, procedural-wise, since it's something we voted in favor of, do we revisit that motion? Or do we rescind that? I'm just kind of trying to understand the procedural part of it. I know Jennifer, new motion to revisit that.
Depends on what the language of the motion was, and I don't know if we have that readily available.
That's what I was wondering.
Was contingent upon something, then you could revisit. Otherwise, it could be a new motion, which is
Okay.
probably the most clean version is just to have a new motion, is my guess.
Okay, thank you. The other part two was, so that the concern is out-of-state travel. If I'm understanding, it's not travel regionally, correct? So I know there's conversations about like nature's classroom that could potentially happen, which is more of a regional travel and overnight program that may or may not still happen. So I guess what I want to understand a little bit is that we're not, we would not be voting on no travel for programs. Is that your recommendation? It would be more of abroad traveling, this particular program that we would not be. Okay, okay.
Singular votes for this one particular.
This one particular program, okay, got it.
And the location.
Okay, and as far as the timing piece, so when, maybe I missed this, the deposits have to be put in by, is it October? Is that what it was?
October 15th. Or October.
October 1st.
With a one.
Yeah. I would need to pull the documents. I have a recollection that they might be refundable in October 15th fully. But the check is due October 1st. Then what happens is the refund amount starts dropping. And I think by November or early December, it's fully non-refundable at that point. But the percentage picks up pretty quickly, like by November 1st, you only get 80% back. By December 1st, it's a much lower number, and then it goes to not refundable at all.
I think for me, I mean, just you can only make a decision based on what you know right now. And so what we know right now, I think, is not probably gonna change. I would certainly think it is a safer decision, and also knowing the circumstances of where these families would be going, and all the other hoopla that's a hot mess right now in Florida. Mask, no mask, and all this other stuff that we, I would not feel comfortable. What we have, our protocols in Massachusetts obviously do not, may not be applied potentially or, or honored. And I just think it would be a very hard situation to navigate. So I, I feel comfortable voting on this tonight if that's what the committee chooses to do.
I'm comfortable too.
And just so you know, I've just moved both the contract and the insurance contract and payment or refund schedule, I think, is what it is, to our meeting folder. So that you.
Okay, so maybe it's just more thinking about the motion that we're making, and that's specific to this program. Let me, I don't remember the name of the actual program too.
It's the MHS ban Disney trip, I believe. That's basically what.
Okay.
We approved.
For the, for the spring 2022.
Correct, yeah. And so I, in, in our meeting folder for tonight, I have Maynard 2022 MCO contract, and Maynard High School Music Department, and then music trip recommendation to the SC. Oh, that, oh, that's Brian's. Where's the other one that I added? Oh, let's see, SD15C for world-class vacations. They're all PDFs.
So maybe it's just a matter of, we would just rescind prior approvals, allowing the travel to, for this program, the spring.
Yeah, you could make a motion to rescind.
Let me actually get to that document. Let me have the refresh. Let's see, I don't know if anyone else has any other thoughts. Are we okay with going forward?
So I just opened up this, um, like, obviously, like, right the second, the Maynard High School Music Department PDF. And I obviously haven't read the whole thing. I read like one sentence, but the one sentence says, the cancel for any reason option for insurance, which I feel like typically would cover canceling for any reason. And then I also feel kind of uncomfortable voting on this when the people who are impacted by it didn't know we were gonna vote on it and didn't have the opportunity to share their thoughts. Granted, I can't really see myself thinking that it's a good idea for them to go, but I'm a little uncomfortable with this.
So it sounds like it might be a matter of either, one, we vote on it on the 23rd, and maybe that allows time for them to share their thoughts, but it might not change the outcome, but it allows at least that ability. I don't know if a lot of will change by then. I don't know if that makes.
I mean, I can't imagine anything would change, but I also feel like people have, like, I'd like the people to have the opportunity to be heard. If the cancel for any reason insurance is affordable and the families are all interested in paying that so that they can wait and see. We, and, you know, we have no idea if we're gonna have a nationwide vaccine mandate at some point before April, or I just, I feel a little bit uncomfortable voting without letting the people impacted share their opinion. But if people want to go forward, I'm okay going forward too.
I think I agree with you, Colleen. I think we should hear from them, and, and I do want to know more about the cancel for any reason insurance. I don't know, and I actually don't know how complicated that is. I don't know if it just means a phone call to this company and to find out what happens in this weird time we're in, or if it's more complicated than that, maybe Chuck knows more.
Okay.
That's a question, oh, sorry.
Yeah, Mike might have just been reading it too.
Yeah.
Um, so in the letter that accompanied that ski, the fee schedule, and I don't know if you guys were looking at the fee schedule or the letter. But the letter says the cancel for any, for any reason option is reflected as an option. That's an additional rate, so they can get the insurance for the trip and then the additional fee for the any reason. And the max benefit is $10,000. So if they cancel, and I don't know how much it's gonna cost per kid, but I believe it's $500 per student, I think. I don't know. Chuck, can you correct me on that?
I, I don't have that information in front of me.
All right, let me look and see if it's in.
Airfare, hotel, and the fees at Disney to be involved there.
Well, it says if we're, if we're looking at the, what did I just open here? The high school music department trip, if you go to the second page, it says current pricing.
Yep.
Per person is $23.87.
Yeah, that's a single, right, the current.
Right, it says quad $18.44, so split that by four, so.
Also think about what they might pay out of pocket just to prepare for the trip also in advance, like, you know, whatever, you know, goodies and stuff.
Yeah.
You know, that might be potentially.
And this contract, this contract has been signed, so they need to rescind it before October 15th, or they need to cancel before October 15th in order to not be charged. Anything after October 15th, they'll be charged up to $600 per person as a penalty.
Lydia, sorry.
Yes, Natasha?
The, when the information was provided to you and Superintendent Haas, was it, I, I know.
It was sent to me at 4:30 this afternoon or something like that.
But it, was it more of, I guess, not understanding the context, and they were just looking for guidance, or what was the, the ask?
I can, I will read the email.
Okay, because I wonder if that might, if the ask was like, we want action, or we just want to, like, FYI? Maybe if it's just like FYI, we can wait until the 23rd if that makes, because it is a lot of information just to read over, and I know we're taking a lot of time.
I just looked, and it said, so it looks like it's a roughly average $2,000 per person, and then the cancel for any reason insurance for a $2,000 trip would be $100 per person. So I don't know that we want, I, if it were my child and they had had and hoping, like, planning on going on this trip for eight years, and I would probably want to pay the $100 to let them wait a little longer and see what was happening. And I, not everybody might, but, um, I don't know.
All right, I will.
So it sounds like, yeah, I was gonna say, it sounds like maybe it makes sense to have, to have us vote on the 23rd so that we can have people show up, and it's also in time for the October payment. Does that sound okay, Chuck?
It does.
They need to know by the 17th.
There.
Oh, I thought it was the 7th. Oh, I thought it was October.
No, they need to know they're having their final mandatory trip meeting on September 17th. They want an answer by September 17th, which is why I said if we don't, we, we might need to have a special meeting in order to address just this issue.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I think one of the questions isn't whether or not we want them to go, or, I think the question, one question is, are we comfortable with a school-sponsored trip to Florida?
Yeah.
So my recommendation, they can say, I, if I was a student, I would want to go, no question. I might even be willing to risk going to Florida. I think the question is, as a school trip, do we support that or not? And I would say at this point, I would not support that as a superintendent of schools, because that's a different thing. Then it's a school-sponsored trip, and I don't feel that that's, in my best judgment, to or for them. So what, we can wait by all means and hear from different people and whatnot, but I can imagine if I'm a student, I want to go on this trip. It sounds fabulous, and I'm, you know, I'm sad not to be able to support it in the same way we did in spring, but I think we have to look at it from that perspective. That's all.
Colleen?
Justice clarification on April 1st, the vote was a motion to conditionally approve the ban trip for April vacation, April 22.
Conditionally approved.
Yes, it was a conditional approval. And we, we said that, in discussion, we said that we would probably revisit it in the fall before they had to make the final decision.
And here we are.
Yes, Jennifer.
Colleen, in the minutes, were there any indication of what conditions?
There was a brief discussion, says Mr. Haas asked for conditional approval of the out-of-state ban trip to Disney. He noted. He noted no one would travel if things changed the negative regarding COVID numbers. Students needed to start planning for their fundraising.
Yep.
So we could basically say, based on updated COVID or information, we are rescinding the conditional approval. Um, for, for the program and, um, Superintendent Haas, Brian, I. I hear your point, I appreciate you reinforcing that, that. It's, the distinction is not that we're depriving students of anyone going personally on their own to Florida, it's whether we are. Um, able to comfortably. Sponsor this as a school, and I think that's a hard decision because I think obviously people, no one taking away from kids more than what we have already happened is painful enough. Actually, senior class.
Yeah, this isn't a decision that I take lightly at all, um. My goddaughter is in this senior class, she's been in chorus for, you know, ever, and has been looking forward to this for a very, very long time, and. I think she will be heartbroken, but I also think that we need to do what is in the best interest and safety of our students.
So I'll make a motion. That we, um, rescind our prior approval. Conditional approval for allowing travel for the, oh. And Maynard Music, hold on, just lost the document. Maynard High School Music Department, um, trip to Florida in, for April, for spring twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to rescind the conditional approval. Uh, for the band trip, the MHS band trip and core, uh, I, whatever Natasha said for, um.
High School Department, yeah, to the Orlando Disney, yeah, April, spring.
April, um, spring twenty-two. Discussion. All right, vote, Mary Branley.
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths. Rose, vote, vote your conscience, vote what you think is right, don't, I mean. That was a yes? Okay, Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. Okay. So moved. Um, and Superintendent Haas and Principal Karogenis, I assume you guys will be informing. The, um, the band trip committee about the decision. Okay. Thank you very much. All right.
Stop.
I know. Um, all right, so now that we've concluded that, is there any other urgent business? No, all right.
Kelly, this is when you mute mute Brian if he says.
Yeah, we can't, I, we can't hear you.
Yeah. That was tough.
Okay. Uh, next on the agenda, we are reviewing the draft district goals. And we are not, um, approving them tonight, we are just reviewing them, discussing them. And they will be included in our discussion, uh, at the workshop on Monday. So, um, I'm going to open the floor to comments, I will start with Mary Branley.
Um, I have a bunch of notes, but I think I'm just gonna save them for the workshop. It was more, um, I found, it just in general. Um, I found some of the areas a little vague, um, I like more specific, um, goals, so, but I will save it for the workshop.
Okay, uh, Hillary Griffiths.
Um, I have comments and questions, but I'm also happy to wait till the workshop if that's easier, um. I think that, um, what's, what's better?
Well, I, I mean, I guess it depends, because the workshop's an hour and a half, and we are supposed to be also working on creating our goals, and we're gonna be reviewing our self-evaluation. So, um. You know.
We also, we have two, we have two workshops though, right?
Yes, but we are also doing the superintendents, we're setting up for the superintendent's evaluation process at the second one. Okay. So we have district goals, school committee goals, and the superintendent's goals and evaluation. Um, process for the next two workshops.
Okay, I'll start then, um, for goal one, um. It, I have a little bit of concern with the ensuring that the communication is inclusive. Um, because then the action items don't seem to really get to ensuring that they are inclusive, they. Um, seem more focused on. Um, like making sure the communications happen, um. And I'm thinking about things like, um, particularly, I know in the past, when there was like the pep rally for the fun run. And an email was sent out saying everyone had a wonderful time, but there were children with special needs that had to eat in the office away from their classmates because. The event was actually hurtful to them, they're built like in, because of the sensory issues or just, and I feel like for the kids that. Feel like they're being excluded for something, uh, uh, and, sorry, a communication that goes out saying everybody had a good time. Is hurtful to the kids who definitely didn't have a good time, particularly because of the special needs or whatever it is, so. And there's been other, um, I, I heard similar, um, concerns from a parent last week with a communication that went out that. Um, made her child feel excluded, and so I didn't know if there was a way to really, um. Try to get specific about the inclusivity part of that goal in terms of the actions, and then. Similarly, um, in terms of evaluating that goal. I think that. So if. Where, if the goal. Is inclusive communication, and we're evaluating whether or not the communication has been inclusive by doing a survey. I'm worried that the evaluation itself. Sorry, I'm not being really clear, um. So say there's a family that speaks a language that we don't typically translate to, and they're missing all the district communications. Then when we send out a survey, looking to see if they felt like communication has approved over the course of the year, but we're still not sending it out in the language that they speak at home. They're not gonna write back and say they don't feel that the communication was inclusive. So I, I worry about basically that just for that goal, the in- inclusive portion of it, um, in terms of the action items and. The evaluating, um, the outcome. And then, um. Uh, a, a brief one is with regards to encouraging staff to include preferred pronouns. Um, I was, I didn't realize that people didn't understand the whole concept of the pronouns. And recently found out that there's a lot of confusion, not, not specifically with the school, but just in general in other workplaces. So I didn't know if that could also be an educational, have an educational piece instead of just asking them to include it, but to also. Try to explain why and, um. Make it a little bit more, um, educational, and then, um. I didn't know. I don't have a lot of experience with, um, like SMART goals and such, but for goal three. Um, in terms of a goal to implement elements of high expertise teaching, is that, um, I didn't know if that was, uh. Specific enough.
Um, Lydia, as we go through this, can we, can you project the goals so we can all see? Whatever, what?
Colleen, can you screen share the goals as we discuss them?
I wonder if it's also helpful if we do one by one.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, like one, goal one, goal two.
And we can kinda go around and talk about each one, that might help a little bit, just to help our discussions, I don't know, just.
Um, the other thing is, is that we, these goals have been in the folder for. At least a week or more, Brian, I can't remember when you put them in, um, and so in the future, um. I think it would, in order for us to be able to do our business more efficiently, we should, um. Read through this stuff, send your questions to me, I get them answered from Brian and I send the answers back, this all could have been. Achieved, uh, ahead of time so that we wouldn't be spending this much time on this now.
Well, I guess I thought this had to be done publicly. So.
Had to be done.
Publicly, so I thought we had to.
Deliberation, deliberation does have to be done publicly, but asking questions and getting answers does not.
I don't have questions, I have notes, like I think that there are some things that need to change.
Okay, then yes, that, that needs to be done publicly, yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
Okay, um, so Elizabeth, you said you didn't have anything, or do you wanna speak now?
I, yeah, I have a ton.
Okay.
So.
That's right, I started with Mary, Mary said she didn't, okay, um, Elizabeth, yep.
Okay, um, so are we gonna, I, I, my computer just glitched out for a minute there, are we gonna project them?
Yes, she's working on it, and then after everyone has gone through, or. Superintendent Haas, do you wanna address each persons, or do you wanna go through them all in case there's some duplications and. Or overlap, and then address them all.
I guess I'm curious, are people gonna send things in writing, or?
Is the. Then send the notes, and then he can like process them, is that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, all right, sorry, okay, yeah, that, that makes sense.
Okay, so we'll provide feedback tonight, and then he will gather his thoughts and send an email to all of us. After. Is that? Are we comfortable with that?
I am, do I send, do I send? Do, sorry.
That's okay, Jennifer.
I just have a comment for something that, um, Ms. Griffiths mentioned that I wanted to clarify, but I can do that. At whatever point, Matt, I'm sure you feel is appropriate.
You can do it right now.
Um, in terms of the purpose of providing the pronouns, we did have a training from the Safe Schools Organization. Um, which partners with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education at the beginning of the school year. Um, for all of our faculty and staff, which did indicate the reason why one would put their preferred pronouns, um, as. A sign and symbol of, um, a person who's a safe person for someone to speak with, and so that information has been communicated, and we will. Continue to communicate that, um, and ways in which that teachers can show that they're a safe person for, for, um, folks to be able to go to. Um, we didn't put that directly into the goals, we can, um, it's something again that we've already done, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that that had occurred.
That makes sense, I had just written that down, my, my bigger ones were just the inclusivity part and then the specificity, I just had that sort of as an extra note, um.
And I took note of those pieces, we, we will talk about, um, we had a long conversation about how to make sure we were addressing each of the pieces, um, and we will take note. Of the, the components that you mentioned to see if we can adjust.
Okay, so Elizabeth.
Okay, and so I'll, I'll just say this, and then Lydia, I email these to you afterwards, and then you send them on to Brian, is that how it works?
Yes, yeah, I'll compile all the comments in one email to send to Brian.
Okay, so, um, I just read through them and I organized it by goal and the outcomes of the goal. So for goal number one, this is what I said, I said, I would argue that the district has already set the expectation. And has met it, that the smores are going out once a week from all buildings, um, so I don't think that we need to have the part about consistent in there yet, cuz I think we've already hit that goal. Um, I think instead we should focus on the words partnership and inclusive. Um, because you already have the consistent part down, the trick now is to take that consistent engagement to the next level of partnership and inclusivity. So in some, some of the ways that I think that would work, um, for our, for example, I think that for the first action item. I, I don't think the action items should be setting a schedule, I think the, that instead this, the make. Establishing the communications, the benchmark, benchmark, it's the sending, instead of, sorry, instead of making that the benchmark, make the sending and the hosting of these events. Um, the benchmark and make them inclusive and genuine partnership attempts. Um, focus on how the district will include marginalized members of the community, like for example, translating the communications or part of the websites. Making sure that there are in-person translators or at in-person events, making sure that there are various times of day for parent forums to accommodate as many work schedules as possible. Making sure parents who we know are underrepresented, perhaps based on data we have about our prior community meetings. Are specifically invited to and accommodated for at the community group meetings. Also define here what the meetings are going to be for each time in the goal, so that they can focus on specific goals, uh, for this year now. Um, I love, the next one, I love the idea of a communication map. If that means, if that's, if what you mean by that is that it's clear who should be contacted for what issue. Um, I would like to see the idea expanded, maybe made accessible to everyone and more inviting to people. I know that there are a lot of parents who feel strange about contacting the school, um. Especially the people who we most want to contact the school, at times feel uncomfortable with that, so we should be thinking maybe about inviting those people in. Um, so I would be nice for, for them to, for them to know not only who to contact, but that they are welcome to contact those people with questions. Maybe some sort of have an idea slash a question about blank, talk to this person slash come to this slash join this community group. That gets blasted out through the channels that we have, um, that would be partnership inclusion. Um, the parent workshops sound great, again, I think the goal needs to be not just to host them, but to ensure that the district is advertising them cleverly, so that all sorts of parents will come. Not just the educationally focused or the driven ones who happen to have time to come. And I'd like more specificity here, how many are we thinking, when, who will host them, having more specific information here will make the outcomes easier to measure. It's simply a matter of execution. Um, I love the data walk, I can't wait to do it, um, I like that we have a date for that here. Um, I think that the goal should be revised, once we have made the actual plan based on the data walk, so that's the last one on that list for goal one. Um. Um, then, if you go down to the outcome. If you, so kind of like what Hillary pointed out, that the measurement that we have right now does not address many of the actual items that we have very well. Um, once you change some of the actual items to be plans of action and not just plans, then they will be easier to measure, and I think that they've been, I think it will fold really nicely in together. So that's, that's goal number one, um, a goal number two, I think we need to be, uh, specific about what goal, learning goals are, what do you mean by learning goals? So being more specific and defined there will be helpful to us as we look to see how we did. Um, like the first goal, the goal shouldn't be to make the calendar, the goal should be, should include the dates that the reporting out will happen. The execution should be the focus, not the plan. The action items across the whole goal need to be specific, PD, when, slash how, slash how many times, something measurable. Um, next one, what, what do you mean by priority standards? I actually don't, I'm unclear, are we talking about the common core standards? Um, do you mean skills, uh, why do we need to identify a list, what, what, what will that list do for the district? It sounds like that's another place for the execution, not the plan, it takes center stage. Um, same on, same for the reporting on data, the execution of the plan should be the action item, with the schedule in the goal, and then let's measure whether that, that schedule was adhered to. Um, we need specific measurable action items about the report card improvements, um, we need specifics on the PD about non-traditional assignments, why are we doing that, what data supports it? What groups of students are you thinking of reaching out with to with this, and how does it fit in with the UDL PD that's already happening, I bet it does fit in, I just think we should define that, so it's very clear. Um, who specifically is on the Innovation Learning Committee is another thing that I didn't know, and it'd be nice to know that so that we can. Know what we're doing, on the school committee, we know what the school's doing, and we can celebrate it. Um, in the outcome, um, I think we do need to define this, this comes up a couple of times, um, the, the, the terms more and growth and priority skills need to be defined. Um, they need to be specific and set real outcome goals, so when you say more, um, I would expect to see like we are at X number right now, and we're hoping to get to Y. Um, or we're at X percent right now, we're hoping to get to Y percent. Um, the one about the data analysis cycle being evidence, evident on team documents is awesome, I love that, so that one's already pretty solid, I think. Um, goal number three, overall, the goals, action items, needs specifics and measurability. Um, they, define with specifics, define, oops, something with specifics, implement. How, oh, define these things with specifics, implement, how, what does that mean, how are we implementing it? What elements specifically besides the two mentioned, you say including these two, these two elements, what other things are you? Going to be focusing on, laying out the action items, meaning the plan here. Then the PD, when, how does that fold in with the UDL, um, if this does tie in with UDL PD, who, who gets this PD? What are the essential skills, are they the same as the priority standards above? How are you identifying what they are and how they should be scaffolded, how are you measuring whether the P is effective? I would like to know, also, just as an aside, I would like to know, cuz I know it's been an ongoing discussion, more about the literacy curriculum. Um, I know it's been something that we've been working on for a while, and I'm coming into it late, but it would just be nice to know what that, what that is and what you're thinking when you implement that. Um, again, for the outcomes, we need to define increase specifically, um, we are, you know, the, the for and after numbers, what we have now and we're hoping for. The goal says ensure all students, the goal at the top says ensure all students have access to grade level standards, but that is not reflected in the outcomes that you have defined, so we need to make sure that's reflected. We also need specific info about what elements of adult professional culture you are referring to. Um, so, so those are my, my comments on those, and my notes on those goals and the outcomes. Um, and I'm assuming that, so none of these things are specifically Brian's role, and I assume that that's because he's gonna set to send in a separate document with his goals. And that they will be forwarded into the, to these things, but they will be separately for him. That's it.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And next, Natasha.
So my first question was, um, how, I know.
So my first question was, um, how, I know, and we've, we've been talking about how we can align the goals to the district's strategic plan. And I'm wondering how this, if this can be laid out in a way that does that or denotes that in some like higher like umbrella, you know? This is where that is. I think that's where. Jennifer, oh.
Do that. Absolutely, you can do that. That's not a problem. I apologize about not putting that in there.
No, I, I figured these were from there, but I think just adding that visual, because that's what we've been working on, like keeping that consistency. I think that would be important to reflect that in the, the format of the goals or the, the view.
Um. Great point.
Thank you. Um, and then the, um, I, I kind of, I kind of expected to hear a little bit more of the behind the scenes. I had my own like kind of questions, but I'm not an educator, and so I really, you know, the, the group responsible for some of these, I didn't know. We have some members here. If there's anyone who, you know, goal one, Jennifer, if you, there are certain things that, you know, why was this particular, I, goal chosen? You know, how did you come to this? Well, I don't know if that's any helpful.
Yeah, I can address that for all three, actually. Um, essentially what we did, and, and again, this is part of, as you mentioned, the internal workings of how we came up with them. We're trying to um, not do too many things, um, and to really make sure we're aligning our, our expectations. So what we did, um, is we took a look at the acceleration roadmap, which I believe we provided the overview, um, to y'all for in the early summer. Um, that came out from DUSI. Um, they partnered with TNTP, which is a national consulting organization to generate this acceleration roadmap. Um, I do want to emphasize that, um, as Superintendent Haas said earlier, um, in an earlier meeting, the term acceleration, um, roadmap really comes from a body of research, um, that addresses how we can help students who may not have the skill sets by grade level that we expect them to have. And so it's not about going faster. It's really about um, being more intentional, um, and, and doing better, if you will. Um, and so that's where that phrasing comes from. Um, and so for those, for that acceleration roadmap, which we put forward for all districts, they identified three priority areas, um, which what we did at our district leadership team is we looked at those three priority areas and said, how do we as a district with our district improvement and school improvement plans, address these three priority areas? And that essentially is what you see in goal one. Um, it emphasizes the notion of connection and collaboration with families and students. How do we make sure that we're centering that in our work this year? Goal two is making sure that we're evaluating where students are and how we can help them to get where we want them to be. And that's what you're seeing in our, our explanation of goal two. And then priority area three is making sure that all students have access to grade level, um, curriculum standards um, with just in time. That's a phrasing from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, just in time scaffold, so that they can access those standards. And that's how you see that articulation there. So that's really how we came up with the overall structure and strategy. Um, to your point, Natasha, they do also overlap very nicely with our strategic initiatives, and we can absolutely put those forward to you um, and just show that visual connection.
Great. Um, piggybacking off of that, the, um, how does the, I know the, the school councils at each building, they also have input into their own building level. Um, improvement plans, does this align? I'm guessing, or I'm just curious about how that alignment might work with those separate set of improvements at the building level. Will this help inform those conversations, what we're envisioning? I just wanted to, I'm, I'm guessing it will, but I would just want to get confirmation on that.
Um, so I'll allow, uh, I'll allow, it's not my meaning. Um, um, so the, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll give a sort of an overview, and then if each of the principals wants to sort of articulate how their conversations with the building levels flow in, uh, I think it's an and both. Um, the reality is that the building level conversations have influenced some of these goals. So for example, the K five report card revision um, and how we're looking at that, um, that really stemmed from a goal that the Green Meadows Council came up with. Um, and we're hoping that we can provide some guidance and support, you know, as we're looking district-wide at where we need to go, what might this look like? And so that the school councils can take this information um, and then say, what does that mean for us here in this building, particularly as it relates to that partnership between parents, um, teachers and, um, and our families and our students. So I don't know if any other principals want to jump in. Um, or Dr. Gabron, you, you've played a, a heavy part in particularly the Green Meadows School Council over the last year or so.
Muted Charles.
Pauline, can you unmute Charles?
Here you go. I'm unmuted. Uh, absolutely. We, uh, we had a wonderful school council last year, and we decided to step by step to um, uh, improve the, uh, the report card, um, situation. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we had so many other things, the, uh, the process has gotten delayed, so we sort of made a timeline for this year, which would involve a, a, uh, input from, um, many people. Uh, also, we, uh, looking at other districts to use for, for, for models. And our new assistant principal, Karen Lindquist, came from Wellesley, where they adapted, adopted a wonderful um, report card, uh, after a great deal of, uh, research. So, um, it's maybe an exciting project to, to be working on.
Great. I would, um, want to see, I, I know last year didn't really lend for this, but the school councils, when they, I imagine we're gonna have them, or maybe the principals on their behalf present to us like we had done in the past.
Definitely.
And it would be great if this would be like, whatever they're presenting as their, you know, asset, it's utilized, um, I guess, kind of like that carry through, like this is what they're recommending at the building level, so we can kind of see that, um, continuation down to the building and how, how that, so that would be my suggestion, um, looking at, um, and thank you, thank you, Charles, and Jennifer.
I could just say one other thing, too. It's, 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 it's great. You, you made an excellent suggestion, because people don't necessarily know, even though they're, they're posted on the website, I know. But it, it's great when great work that's being done can be well publicized, so the public can know just how much we are doing.
Yeah, I know the school, I mean, that's a great body. I always am a, I'm a big advocate, because it's one of the few um, groups that has, it's made up from faculty and leadership and parents who, um, volunteer their time, and I really appreciate that work. So I always want them to feel like they're being utilized the best way to help actually improve our buildings and, and whatnot. Um, and I think it's great that, that we can leverage that as much as possible. Um, and goal one, um, suggestion would be, I, I see that there's, um, the information about partnership with students and families. Um, when I look at the, the action items, I, I feel like there's not a lot of student, um, partnership aside from the W, that, that third bullet, and I wonder if, if there are other opportunities that could be, um, considered on how we're engaging the students, um, in this, in our communication, or I don't know if it's through other means or whatever, but that would be maybe an action item there to expand, um, student involvement in, in some other way. Um, the inclusivity part, um, I, I think that that is something that I don't necessarily, I guess I would want to understand. I don't see how the action items kind of get to that exactly. Um, aside from meetings. So maybe giving a little bit more context of an action item on, on how the inclusivity bill be, you know, you know, and, you know, defined or achieved, um, for an outcome. Um, I know that we've worked really hard to make sure that, you know, emails and communications are multi-accessible in languages, um, so, you know. But I know that, that, that community is, is also growing, so I would want to see if there's another opportunity in inclusivity, how we can create a different action item there. And I, I do agree a lot with what Beth was, um, talking about as regarding, um, defining, um, or specifying. I mean, I just think of my own kids' IEP. I mean, you talk about percentage and, you know, of what the, how you know you're achieving the goal, so I'd really like to see more quantitative, like number or the measurement of like before and after, like this is where we are, our starting point is, this is where we know, well, and so we can actually visually understand, like me as a non educator, and a lot of this is educator-driven, I can actually look at numbers and say, yes, you know, I don't know how you got there, but at the outcome, it's easy for me to look at the data and say, yes, that's how, you know, we, we're getting there. So that's kind of some of the kind of primary stuff. I'm looking at the, um, the second goal. Um, a little bit more. Oh, and I'm sorry, one more thing on the first goal. The, um, and this came up and I think that the technology, when we looked at leveraging Aspen, um, I would really like to see, um, because Aspen is a new tool that we've invested a lot of money in, how can we leverage Aspen to achieve some of these improved partnerships with communication, with families? Um, you know, whether it's accessing information. Um, I've, I've heard that they do surveys in Aspen in some modules. I have no idea, but I heard there's a lot of fun stuff that can happen. I don't know if we've taken advantage of all that and what the possibilities are, if it costs money or not, but um, that would be something I would like to see from a, you know, technological standpoint, if we have now can better use our resources to achieve some of these, um, outcomes later on. Um, one thing that comes to mind, which came up when we talked about Aspen, was like, um, partnership, like, like the IP information. You know, that's something that I, um, parents accessing, or maybe that would be more looking at the, the report cards, you know, progress reports for kids on IPs, you know, having those available and technology. So I just would like to see if we can leverage technology in a way to help us in some of these, but in any capacity. Um, and then I think that's really it for, for me. I'll reserve everything else for, for Monday. Um, and the literacy one is just, I think we're just waiting to hear more about that, um, and how, um, I guess, I just would like to hear more about it. I think that's a larger conversations. I don't want to hone in on that. That's, you know, it's kind of part of these goals, but I think it's certainly worth a larger discussion amongst the board um, on, on that, on that top, the actions that are happening in there, because I know they're very exciting, and I know a lot of people have great interest in our community. And I don't want it to just be one action item in, you know, kind of there. I think it really needs to be more highlighted, um, in, in a, in a, in a, in a different way. Um, but thank you for putting this together, for everyone who has been really kind of, um, coming to this. I, I appreciate the work, and I look forward to kind of, I think, more discussions next Monday. Um, who will be joining Monday? Just to confirm, I just want to understand, Jennifer, Jennifer, will you be there also? I don't know. Like, I just want to make sure, like, if we have questions, I, I just want to understand, you know, that if it's, if you're kind of like the main um, go-to for these, you know, and some other things, some of the conversations.
Time, obviously, if Brad's available, I am likely available, so.
It's Monday, six thirty to eight. It hadn't occurred to me to, um, invite Jennifer, but she's welcome to join us. Dorothy will be leading the discussion.
Maybe even if there's a better time, they can say like this segment, so it's not like you have to maybe necessarily be there the whole time or whatever, but I don't know.
I'd have to confer with Dorothy, because I don't know what her intentions are, what she, she, she's going to review all of our documents and then address them in the way that she thinks makes the most sense for us.
Madame Chair, I'm happy to be an, and Superintendent Haas, obviously, I will be wherever and whenever you feel is appropriate and helpful for me to be there.
All right. Thank you very much.
Be really helpful. Yeah. Yeah, thank you very much. All right. Yield the floor.
All right. Thank you, Natasha. Mary, do you have any last bit, or you want to?
Um, well, I guess, um, I guess it was more a case of, um, with these SMART goals, every year I have the most difficult time assessing whether they've been met or not, because it seems as though they're too generic. They're not specific enough. And, um, so some of the things that, um, Elizabeth was talking about, just to define, you know, how much of a percentage are we looking at to improve um, in different areas? That's, that's sort of where I'm coming from, um, in every single case. The goal two, for instance, it talks about the district will establish systems to monitor and share student progress toward learning goals. It's so, it's so general to me. It's like, are we gonna hone in on math and literacy, for instance, or, um, i- it just seems as though, um, having it that general, that, um, even, you know, with the action items, it just seems as though it's going to be difficult to assess whether they've actually been met or not. So that's the overall, um, comment that, that I would make. So like, for instance, I did like the fact that, um, we're gonna have the, um, the K to five report card. Okay, I can assess on whether that was done or not. Um, you know, that's a nice specific one, and even the literacy curriculum, um, that's like specific that we can say, okay, where are we in the process? But some of these other ones, it's, um, how far along are we going to be in the process? So just to have a beginning and an end is the overall comment that I would make.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Mary. Um, Superintendent Haas, do you want to comment or say anything before we move on to our next agenda item?
No, thank you for the comments. I'm assuming you'll send those to the chair who will forward them and will work on them. They were great comments. Um, the goal here is to make these useful, and as Assistant Superintendent Goddett's shared, they really came from what does the district need in alignment with what is the Department of Education saying with the acceleration roadmap? So clearly, we felt like the, the belongingness and this inclusivity and connection with families was something that's been talked about a lot this summer and in the acceleration roadmap. So that sort of formed the basis for goal one. And we will absolutely work at, um, spelling out some of the specific action steps and the benchmarks as well. Uh, and that same concept works for goal two and goal three as well. So thank you for the comments, and we will work to improve them.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next, we have, um, we are reviewing the, and we can vote to accept the list of policies. We spent so much time on EBCFA amending, uh, amendments yesterday and during policy subcommittee that we had about five minutes to discuss the list. Um, and so.
I don't think I saw the list, though. Was it this morning?
Uh, no, it wasn't in this morning. I did it, um, this afternoon. Basically, and it's not specific. I did
Okay.
put in a link to the tracker, just so you guys could get an idea of where we've been and where we're going. Um, this is our suggestion so far, but we may add, um, to this.
By the way, I love the tracker. I just want to add that. I really appreciate the work that's been put into the tracker with kind of like cross-checking. I look at that thing a lot, and I know it's been a lot of like, because our old policies were just like a hot mess in some ways, so I appreciate.
It makes me cross-eyed. Yeah.
It, well, no, because it helps, it helps me to kind of like, what do we have? What are we moving on to? So no, I, thank you for that.
You're welcome. Um, yeah, and there are two other sheets that I'm working on where it lists the district. And then, like, all the district policies, you know, I think it's three through, I don't know, six hundred and something or seven hundred and something. And then the equivalent mask, um, policy. And so that's the one that I need to finish so that we can go through and review all of those that have not yet been compared to the current district policies. Um, and then we can either adopt or replace or amend and recodify or whatever. Um, so that's one of the lists, and, um, so the list, what we discussed was section B, which, uh, the code for section B is basically school committee, um, school committee operations. Um, school board operations. And so that would basically, these make up the bylaws um, or support the bylaws. And our bylaws, I've had Glenn and Dorothy look them over. They only really saw one discrepancy or one issue, and that's the fact that we say we have a secretary, but we don't actually have a secretary. So that's something that we ought to talk about. Um, so I would like to go through section B. We've done some of section B already, so it's not like we have to do all of them. And not all of them apply to our district either. So, um, I plan to, for the next policy subcommittee meeting, we will go through the B section and determine which ones we need to address. And then we will present that to the school committee, so that there is a more specific list of policies that will be addressed. Uh, we also need to review the policies that were referenced in policies that we adopted last year but didn't get to. So the cross-references, I've gone through and I've listed out, um, everything that there's a mention of or a reference to in support of the policies that we adopted. And, and we will need to be reviewing those, just because it doesn't make sense to have a policy adopted, but its supporting policy is not. And then the third is, um, we will review any policies that become outdated or are amended or newly adopted by masks throughout the course of the year. And that's just sort of a given. So I don't know if.
Actual questions?
Yes, yep.
So, um, I know last year it was like policy, whoa, and we approved so much. And a lot, um, where I think the updating the website, I know is the other part of the lift, right? Is that once we do that, what are, and I know this is Colleen, unfortunately she's not cloned yet. But I just wanted to get an understanding of when, because I, I wonder if we could do that at some point, maybe the next month? I don't know the timeline. I know it, I don't know how many needs to still get done. But what, what is the thought on that part? And so we can kind of,
Where's my?
Maybe it's like a parallel action, right? Um, updates are happening as we're approving. And then the other part, while you're thinking about that is, um, finance policies. I know we talked about in our budget subcommittee. You know, looking at, um, certain things like the cost centers and, you know, so those are all, I would want to just add those to the potential list. Because I think we'll, at some point, I mean, maybe we have like a board to board, you know, we have a joint subcommittee meeting or something, you know, Brian. It, when we get to that point, but I know that there are, that policy, um, in particular, um, might need to be.
Yep.
Also added.
Yep.
And prioritized.
Okay.
But anyway, I just know that there's a lot right now. When I, I know, when we go to the website, we have those large, big dump of stuff that we adopted in January twenty twenty. And then in that process, we've been, some of them aren't actually redundant because we actually had mannered ones too, which is kind of the tricky part. So I'm just looking to see if there's some way we can chip away at streamlining a little bit.
And I'm work, I'm working on those. Um, Colleen and I are, are working on those. Yeah.
Which is why I love that cross check, because it helps a lot with that, too.
But you tell us if we can help too, because it's an awful lot. Um, it's a big task.
Absolutely. I'll start giving everyone homework.
Mm-hmm. I think that's a good idea.
Um, Hillary is actually a rock star. I mean, she like came in, she had done her work and she had some really great suggestions for, um, EBCFA and other policies, to talk about in the future. And so I think, um, even though we won't be meeting every other week this year, like we did last year, I think we'll still get a lot accomplished.
Are these, um, the policies that you're recommend, like the subcommittee is recommending us to do? Or are these kind of like the rough draft, but maybe we should maybe suggest if we have some other ones that we want to consider?
Now, why don't we, why don't we do that? Um, I don't think, again, we didn't have enough time to really break it down, um, and, and be specific to make a list. So probably voting tonight is not necessary.
Okay. So well, as a, as a homework, we can just mull it over.
Each of the subcommittees talks about which policies they'd like the policy subcommittee to look at.
Great idea.
That works.
Yeah. Okay. Awesome. Um, all right. So if there isn't anything else, does anyone else have a comment? Elizabeth or Hillary or nope? Okay. I missed the very last thing you had said. I said that you were awesome and a rock star. That. No, I heard that part, but whatever you just said about. Each subcommittee will meet and they will talk about the, um, the policies that they would like the policy subcommittee to review. Like for instance, what Natasha said about the finance and the class centers, like, so the, the budget subcommittee will go through. And I believe, you know, those are all of like, I don't know, F or something like that. Sorry, my internet is being a pain.
It's all right.
It is too.
D, section D is all fiscal management. So like, you know, and then strategic planning and, and, and curriculum would go through a different section, that sort of thing.
Okay. So I'm new and I am not on the policy subcommittee. So I'm not clear. So if I look in the, our drive and I'm looking at section A through section L, I'm not sure which ones have already been updated and which ones haven't.
All right. Which, are you on the website or are you in our Google Drive?
I'm, I'm in our drive. I got to our drive through the website, but there's two, there's actually two different ways to get into the policies and regulations. Um, and one of them takes you to the website and one of them takes you to the drive. Have you noticed that on our dropdown menu? So they're not. And it, uh, so if you go like, I'm showing my screen, school committee, or you can't, you can't tell.
So if I'm not on the MPS website, I go to school committee and then I go down to policies and regulations.
Yeah, there's two policies and regulations.
Yeah. I'm not sure I, that, Colleen.
So the one that goes to the website, um, those are basically how our old ones were formatted. In the future, when we're all done, it'll look like the drive where it's all nicely laid out in the different sections with the policies under each section. But we're not quite there yet.
Okay. So if I go to the ampersand, uh, section, then that, those are all the updated policies? Or they are still not all updated?
Those are all of the current policies that either have been adopted. So if you see a letter call, a call out, you know, B E D H. Those were mask policies that we adopted, or we have recodified our, our previous district policy as under the call letter, because eventually they'll all have the mask call letters. The policies like you'll see P O L zero, zero, five, mission vision and manner. That one we haven't looked at yet. Right? That, so those, the ones that are, that still have numbers still need to be matched with their mask equivalent and reviewed simultaneously. And then we decide, do we keep the old district one and recodify it, or do we adopt masks?
Okay. So how do I know which ones are, are just masked and have not been combined yet and, and reevaluated? And which ones are so that I can, you know, if you're asking us to figure out which ones we want to look at, I'm not sure if I'm going to be like, you should look at these. And you'll be like, we did that last year. So how do I know?
So that's not on this website. Only the ones that are currently applicable are on this website. The tracker is in the subcommittee, policy subcommittee folder.
Okay. So the tracker, if I look at that, then that is.
Yes.
Tracker is, is, is helpful because of that. There's a lot of, like, it's kind of like they're still in the mix of, of doing that. So it just really kind of shows you like what's the old one, if it was updated, when it was updated, what the new one was. It does that cross check. So I definitely would say that probably is a better tool that Lydia and team have made.
So when, when I look at the tracker, this means that you have, that these, you've, it's, there's not my, oh, okay. I see. Okay. I got it. Okay. Thank you. Makes more sense now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yep. No problem. Um, all right. Are we good? Can we move on? Any more questions? Nope. Okay. Excellent. So next we have, um, the review and hopefully, um, approve the EBCFA, the amended EBCFA that is in the folder. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Mary sent me some grammatical changes that I need to make. And I will pull up that email just so I can share what she said. Fourth paragraph, a student's mask or face covering. Or Mary, do you want to just say it?
No. Yep. It's, um, so it's not that one. It's the, um, the third line. However, the district will supply disposable face cover rings.
Instead of face masks?
Right. Or face covering. No, I thought it was supposed to be plural. Maybe not. I just thought that that should be plural, but maybe, maybe not. Um, for individuals who arrive, blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
And then the other one was, um, down further, the same paragraph. It says, however, the district will supply disposable face coverings for individuals who arrive at a building or, uh, board school transportation without one. Um, and then continuation of the sentence, um, if a mask becomes wet or soiled during the day and the individual does not have a, a second mask available. So it's just all one continuous sentence versus starting off the sentence with if a mask becomes wet or soiled, because then that's not a sentence.
Oh, because I have that in, on my version.
Oh, it's not in my version. Okay.
Oh, I wonder, so I linked it and then I went back and made a couple of additional edits. I wonder if.
Nope. I, I just opened up the one that you've got on, in our, um, on our files. But, um, but anyway, if you already made it, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay.
It was just that if, if that mask becomes wet or soiled, that was just a phrase. It wasn't a sentence.
Yeah.
So, yep, that's all I had.
I had a couple of things. I don't know. That would be the good time.
Oh, yeah.
So I was wanting to suggest that we change it to policy, because that's what I think we are making here. I know last time we had approved it as a protocol, but really it's forming a policy, right? And we're, we're pointing at, there might be a protocol that Brian or something does separately. But I just thought it might in line with the language that we use for policies, if that could be, thought would be to, to amend that instead of referring to it as a protocol. And then, um, the other part was, I, I saw that you had incorporated, I had sent Lydia, um, feedback. Uh, thank you very much for reviewing all that. Um, the, so we had approved the original policy the day before the mask mandate came. And I know part of the original policy that we approved, there was a discussion. We didn't feel comfortable the time changing it, but there was discussion about taking masks off indoors when you're in closed spaces and, you know, how that, you know, whatever not happened or okay with. And then the mask mandate came down from the state. I couldn't find language in the mask mandate that allowed for that. And I was a little bit unsure about us being less restrictive. Not that I don't agree with it happening. I just am concerned with us allowing something that isn't mandated in this current moment by the state, because I feel like they're, they're, we could be more restrictive, but I think less restrictive might not be allowable. So I just wanted to understand that part. If we, not that maybe after October one, we could, you know, then what they, you know, if we meet the, you know, they rescind the mandate, then I would probably want to consider that we have more flexibility. But I just think that if that isn't specifically outlined in the mandate, um, I would be hesitant to amending, you know, language, an exception, um, that is less, less restrictive.
All right. I'm looking at that right now. Um.
And I know it came out again, like the day after we did all that work in our discussions. So it kind of stunk that.
That's the one, the one that says like the D O E dot mask dot E D U, um, mask requirement one that has.
The twenty, yeah, the one that they, they. Yeah, that, the twenty fifth. I think they talk about like mask breaks. And so maybe that is the language that we, you know, think around that, you know? But that is, I would want to make sure that what we're looking to change is aligning more with that. And maybe we revisit it if, when this is lifted, you know, because we would maybe have vaccinations or, you know, to whatever they want and all that other stuff that they're looking for benchmarks to, in order to lift the mandate.
I have a weird question for, uh, the principals and, and Brian, if you can answer it, are you doing staff meetings in person or are you doing them remotely?
That means I'm in person.
They're in person? Even like the building meetings with the principals?
The building meetings at the high school this week have been done in person.
Okay. All right. Okay. I only ask because, because that would be if, if you were doing remotely, people in their rooms, they would have their masks off and that would make sense to have that in the policy. But you're doing them in person, so they're having their mask on anyway.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I cannot find any guidance. There's no mention of allowing masks to be taken off when alone.
But I, I mean, I don't think it's an unreasonable thing. I just, under the circumstances, since it was, I just, that's the, that's one of the things that I had a little.
Why don't, we can table that one sentence. And, or take it out and revisit it. And I will run that by, um, Glenn Kuchar.
Okay.
To ask if, if that's legal.
Um, and then I do appreciate the language that was put in about the recognition of the anxiety, social emotional. That's really helpful. The one other thing that I would want to see if it could be added and it, it doesn't look like it was, was, and I just want to hear a conversation about the discussion around, um, kids, because I think Jeff maybe had emailed CPAC and had about, um, the visual kids who are, you know, the disability and transparent masks and in the classroom. So that doesn't seem to be in, um, or wasn't accepted as a recommendation. So I would, and I can read for the board. I don't know if everyone had, had.
No, not everyone had access to it.
Okay. So, uh, for context, I had, when it talks about, under the amended, let me see what section it is. It on the amended part. Um, so I think it actually was on page. Face coverings may not be required for those. So in that, in that last paragraph in the first page, so what I had, asked to be included or considered was face shields may be an option for students with medical disability or behavioral needs or unable to wear masks. Transparent masks may also be an option used for both teachers and students in class where communication disabilities exist that require the visual, the visualization of verbal cues in order to communicate.
Okay. I thought that that was kind of accounted for because, um, I, I had had a part that said two layers of fabric and we took that part out so that the clear plastic piece would be permissible. Um, and then it does say that the face shields or physical barriers may provide an alternative instances if approved.
I think that.
Is that different than you meant?
Yeah. I think, um, what I am thinking of is like, as a, as a, someone who has auditory or verbal things that their ability to communicate with their peers also in their class is important. Um, just like we, you know, if there's an accommodation potentially, so it's not just about what the student can wear, but the people who they need to communicate with in the classroom. So it could be, you know, peers or whatever, um, that might be able to. So I just, if there is an opportunity, I just don't want that to get lost, um, in that conversation. And I, I actually took some of this language from other, you know, looking around at other documents that I just felt it was more inclusive and kind of.
I'm going to ask Jeff to speak to this because we did discuss this.
Okay.
And, um.
I know it came up a little bit in our last meeting too, and I don't, I know, I don't know where, where we landed.
So what is the question you'd like me to respond to?
So Jeff, um, Natasha had suggested face shields may be an option for students with medical disability or behavioral needs who are unable to wear masks. Transparent masks may also be an option used for both teachers and students in classes where communication disabilities exist that require the visualization of verbal cues in order to communicate. I do not remember our specific conversation around this, but I believe we felt that, that that was allowed for. Um, and there was.
My concern is we can't note every single possible, uh, scenario in the policy. So I think even acknowledging that we're not going to deny a child a free and appropriate education, which is, you know, clearly, required by Fed law.
I think just by being explicit about it though, it just re, it, 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 it highlights that we're being super considerate of that, um, as an option. Not that it's being excluded in any way or that anyone would feel that. But I think for a parent who has kids with disabilities, it makes them feel that, that aspect is being appreciated, which we've had feedback on.
So, um, here's my thought on that, because it does get in a little more granular. Like the overall policy tends to be a little bit broader and like, um, Acton Boxborough then did an addendum that was much more like instance or, or, um, person-specific if necessary. We can look at that, but the, the more specific you get, then the more, the broader you have to be and the more, uh, the wider net you have to cast. And we have to start thinking of every little thing. Um, and it's just, it's sort of opening. A, uh, I don't, I don't want to say Pandora's box, because that's not really it, but it just, it. A, uh, I don't, I don't wanna say Pandora's box, cause that's not really it, but it just, it's a domino effect. You, you start doing specific for this, what, yes, Hillary.
Um, I think that what we were going over yesterday, my, I, we made sure to account for the children who need. The face shields or the clear face masks, but I had forgotten, I wasn't thinking about, I hadn't realized with Natasha's suggestion. That it was applying to other children in the class. So I wonder if there's a way just for us to add a few words to say, like where we already say face shields or physical barriers. May provide an alternative in some instances if approved to say like, um, for a class if approved. Or like, I don't know, give like a little bit of wiggle room there, just so that, cause I don't know that we leave. I think we, we tried to be really careful making sure we were accommodating to the child that needs an exception. And I don't know that we left any wiggle room for other kids in the class.
Okay, so here's what I think. I think that, um, this needs further discussion. And I think it needs to have further discussion in a policy subcommittee meeting. It's not necessary that we definite, that we, you know, adopt this amended version tonight. So I would suggest that we table this for now to the next meeting. The policy subcommittee can review it and you can email us the suggested language that you, you. Like Hillary, you can, you, you suggested just tweaking some of the sentences. And maybe you can come up with something like that. And Natasha, I assume you just want us to consider that, that paragraph.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a way, I, I was, I was thinking more about the act, like the social emotional piece that that person has with their, with their peers as well. It extends beyond just the individual, it's about how, you know, being considerate of how they can communicate in their class with people that they're engaging with. So I, that was my, my, my caveat or intent behind that.
Okay, I think this requires further discussion and if.
So we don't, we don't, yeah, we don't have to vote on it tonight because school has started. And so what is the policy right now for us to, for the principals to be able to live by? Okay, alright.
We approved one though, the other, we already.
Yeah.
Wait, I didn't understand Mary's point, Mary, what, what, what are you?
So I guess I, I'm just wondering, you know, what policy we have in place right now to help the principals. And everybody with students as school has opened while we're.
The updated EBCFA that we received from mask on August 19th, we, we adopted that, yeah.
Right, okay, just making sure that we've got something in place, okay?
Alright.
Lydia, can we take out that piece about the staff and accept this and then amend it again if we need to?
Take the piece out about what?
The staff.
He, yes.
And then, and then if you guys wanna play with the wording around that one little piece, then we can, but we have this in place in the meantime.
I'm fine with that too, I mean, anyone can make an emo, can make a motion to do, you know, and then we, we vote on it, so. Yeah.
So the sentence that says face shields or physical barriers may provide an alternative in some instances if approved. In theory, that approval could be for other kids in the class, right?
Yep.
Like, so the way it's written, even though it's not like, we're not advertising the inclusivity aspect, we're still allowing it, right?
We are, um, the only, the only thing that I am thinking about is what if there are other parents? What if they're parents of other kids in that class who are not comfortable with their kid wearing the plastic see-through mask? So then we get into, do we have to have waivers signed for the other kids in that class? Which, so I think that's why this really warrants a larger discussion, more in-depth discussion. And I, I would, um, I support Elizabeth's suggestion that we take out. Uh, in one, two, three, four, in the fifth paragraph, masks may be removed by staff when alone in a room. And we wait and discuss Natasha's suggested paragraph, and yes, Brian, sorry.
Why would we take that out?
Um, because suppose, because in reviewing Desi's guidance, there is nothing that allows. For anyone to take their mask off in the building in any situation.
But no, it does say that, what it says in the, in the Desi one is that lunch breaks are the mask. But so, so, so what it sounds like to me is that right now, we have two things that we're thinking through more. One is that one sentence about the staff, and one is the thing about the kids in classes with kids who need to read lips, right? So then if we, if we just kind of put those things aside, but accept the rest of it and talk more about those, is kind of what I mean.
Yep. Okay, so if anyone would like to make a motion?
Um, my, my one, sorry, my one question is, it's talked, you guys are trying to talk about this in the subcommittee, right? We're not gonna talk about this again here, but we can send our, just like last time, we can send our recommendations to you.
But any changes we make in the subcommittee would have to be voted on here, right?
Yes, yeah, that's how it goes, it's like we bring it to the school committee, school committee says yay or nay. And then we take it back and we work on it some more and then bring it back and.
So I will make, oh, oh, go ahead.
You started.
Yep, no, I'll make a motion that we accept EBCFA, um, taking out the last sentence. In the fifth paragraph, masks may be removed by staff when alone in a room.
Second.
Second.
Second, alright, any discussion? No, alright, yes.
Who's, because when staff are alone in a room and there's no one within 30 feet of them. And they're grading papers, you want them to wear a mask?
I don't, but.
I don't, but are we required to require it right now?
Right, because of the mandate, that was the question.
I do not think that's what the commissioner's mandate says.
No, what it says, it says that weird wording, so what Natasha pointed out is just that the, Desi, if we put that line is, then, then potentially we look more permissive. Than Desi, and so should we think about that more before we put it in?
We can always amend it, Brian, at some point, I think that's the conversation.
Because it, we are not saying that, well.
I guess I'm looking for clarity, just for, so, is the expectation that when staff walk in the building, they're gonna have a mask on them? They're not gonna take it off except at lunch.
It says. But if, if feasible, breaks should occur when the windows are open or students are outside. As a reminder, meals and outdoor recess provide built-in mask breaks for students and staff, and that's annoyingly the only thing they say about it in this policy. So, do, you know, so I, it's annoying, and I don't think, I don't think that we are really expecting that people are gonna keep their masks on when they're.
Okay, as long as we're in agreement, I just wanted to make sure that Drew was saying the same thing.
Terrible, and I don't think that that is reasonable.
I don't think it's a, I just was concerned, my concern was that we, because the mandate came in after we approved the last policy. Literally the next day, are we allowed to be less restrictive than how the mandate's wording is? And that's the part I think was gonna be discussed.
Alright, so I'm gonna throw monkey wrench into this, the original EBCFA, which has been vetted by mask. Does say face coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing is enforced.
Right, and that was before the mandate also.
Oh, you are correct. Alright, so I take back my monkey wrench.
So I, yeah, so, so in some ways that sentence. So maybe you just don't highlight that, but it is still okay in our policy for people to have, don't ask in the room, right? That's what it seems like.
As a, as an option to find the loophole if one wanted to do so. Um, where it does say mask breaks may occur throughout the day. I believe that one, you could infer that a mask break may occur if you are in a room by yourself with the door closed.
I would say, yeah, we're not outlining that specifically, that would be, I think, at a building level to, you know. I just putting it in the policy where it's not in the mandate would be the caution that I have. Alright, so I think we have, ready for vote?
That we have the policy and then as a regulation, the district can determine through the superintendent. Where mask breaks may occur with staff members. Is that your thought, Natasha?
If, is not out of line with the mandate right now. I think after October one, I'm hoping we have the mandate lift and we can be more loosey-goosey with some of those things. My only is, we don't, I don't think we have that right now, that's where I've kind of defer to the mandate to really guide us. Until, um, we have that flexibility back, once we demonstrate all the vaccination and all the other stuff that's been asked. So, you know, it could be October 1st, we just come back and visit once, if that's when the mandate gets lifted. But I, I am not comfortable changing or altering wording of what the state has already mandated. Because we're not comfortable, I am not comfortable with some of the things in there, I'm not disagreeing with it. It's just the, I don't feel we are empowered to linearly change that because we don't like it.
Okay, we have a motion on the table and it's seconded. Um, we've had discussion, so. Do we want to vote or do we want to amend the motion?
Well, the motion is to have, an emotion is to vote on it not having that line in there, right?
Right, to approve the amended version of EBCFA with masks may be removed by staff. When alone in a room, removed, taken out.
So are we doing roll call?
Well, I'm, is, are we ready to vote?
I am.
Okay, further discussion, no. Alright, here we go, Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
And Mary Branley.
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths. Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes, okay. So we'll strike that, we will further discussion and we can do an EBCFA dash P. In which Brian can specify where mask breaks take place by the staff. And could be when they're alone in their room.
If you happen to be also talking to the lawyers, could you ask if we can have that in there? Because common sense says it's okay, um, just to clarify, cause maybe it's okay to have it in the fault, regular policy.
I will, I will ask Glenn, yeah. Okay, next item is, um, to, 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 to superintendent's report.
I think it's supposed to be the principal's update on opening of the schools, isn't it?
Oh, I thought that was part of the superintendent's report.
Oh, alright, we've got it as a different item, okay.
Okay. Yes, you are correct, principal's update on opening of schools, I thought it was part of the superintendent's report. So Chuck and Mike, and is Rob still here, did he have to go put the baby to bed? Oh, there you are, hello, alright, thank you for sticking with us, I apologize. So. Superintendent Haas.
Yeah, we had a great opening, I'm gonna let each of the principals, they've been waiting for a very long time, let them speak and then, uh, let them retire for the evening. If anybody wants to start first, we'll start, we'll start with Mr. Care Jim, he is highest on my screen. So if he can give a quick overview of how the opening of school went, that would be better.
Sure, um, the opening of the school went very well, we have had excellent attendance through the first four days. At the high school level, student schedules are always a consideration, including schedule changes that students wanna do. The guidance department has pretty much completed all schedule changes. So students are now in the classes they want and they're making progress. Now that schedules are set, uh, we can finalize seating plans in the cafeteria. Because we know who, which kids are in what classes and which lunch they will be going to. So we started finalizing the seating plans today. Uh, we have classroom seating plans for every class, and that's all obviously for COVID. Contact tracing, I think as everyone knows, we had a tragic loss of a student over the weekend. That's impacted the high school greatly. In response, the, uh, school assisted and helped facilitate a, a vigil. That was arranged by parents and community members, it was held in front of the high school. I think many people here were at that vigil. I think that proved to be very much needed by the students. And, uh, the fact that we were closed on Tuesday also allowed students to gather together to support one another. We did have, uh, counseling services available on Tuesday with the support of regional. Mental health and crisis group that we're a member of. For, for of their staff members on Tuesday, uh, the music teachers have all been intimately involved. In all of our plan, uh, as Ronan, uh, the student who passed away was. Very much a valued and prominent member of the music community. We held a voluntary staff meeting, uh, in the media center, uh, Wednesday morning. So that staff would all be on the same page and be delivering a similar message to students through the day. Acknowledging Ronan's death, but also letting students know what supports were in place for them. Uh, our guidance staff on Wednesday did meet with students, although. Was not an overwhelming number, several students did avail themselves of our counseling services on Wednesday. Today, the school, uh, day, once again had excellent attendance. And students, uh, were, were going through their scheduled day without any disruption, discernible disruption. Also on Wednesday, to backtrack a little bit, we held a second voluntary staff meeting in the media center after school. To debrief and make sure we had things in place for the rest of the week. And staff reported that, uh. Wednesday went as well as could possibly be hoped, which I think is a testament to the staff for their work. And also a testament to the students. I've asked staff this week to concentrate on two things, one is building a sense of routine for the students. Because they've been so disrupted for so long, but also to focus on social and emotional supports this week. Uh, for example, I've asked staff not to give academic homework this week at all. To let the students use this week to gather, to have their emotional needs met. And, uh, as much as we wanna dive into academics. I think there are bigger fish to fry this week than, than diving into academics. So in short, the school year has opened well. The students and staff have responded to a tragedy extremely well. And we will continue to be vigilant for weeks and months to come. Because dealing with grief and loss clearly isn't an event, it's a process that manifests itself. At different times for different people, but we are certainly aware of that. So that's how high school has opened this year.
Thank you for that. And I just, the school committee really appreciates what you and, and Kevin put together for the students. And, um, I know that a lot of people were very appreciative of the candlelight vigil and all the counseling support. So, um, thank you very much for taking care of that. Um, alright, Mike or Rob, who wants to go next?
Mike can go, he can follow them.
Go, we'll go in order, okay, Rob, you sure?
I know.
Mine, mine put themselves to bed. Okay, I'll be quick, uh, we also, well, that was a, um, Chuck's, uh, description of his opening. Had a somber tone and, and I, I. Had a somber tone and I, I really want to respect and appreciate that. We, we also. You know, Ronan's sister Abby goes to AMSA. I believe she goes to AMSA and so she wasn't at the Fowler, but we do have a number of students and staff. Especially staff, I believe, who were, you know, my, my observations. Were that they were very, very, very rattled by, by this. And needed support in different ways and one of the, one of the most touching things I've seen in all of my twenty. Twenty-two years now in public education is at the candlelight vigil, I watched. A T, one of our teachers at Fowler. Give a student a hug and. You know, I said to her, like, as I was leaving the, the, the event, I said. That was really nice that you gave the student a hug and she said, no, no, that's not what happened. She said he saw that I needed a hug and he gave me a hug. And I was just so moved by that, that is just amazing, our Maynard community. Everybody was there for one another and, you know, we were able to send Brenna Cotter to the high school. That next day. And she mentioned to me that she did counsel some students that day and there was a need. So she felt very valued being there and. And you know, so we've, we've also offered our staff a lot of support, Dr. Imperato's been fantastic, she was a psychologist. Before going into administration, so she's been fantastic with like kind of seeing that need and. To address it. Other things, just about the opening of the school, I, I agree with Chuck, it's gone very well, in fact. I made this comment a couple of times to people that I feel like it's the, one of the strongest openings we've had. And it's possible that my perspective is just so skewed because of last year when we started with the two on, three off. And it became very, very difficult with the feedback that we got from that. But I really just can't remember a time that the school year started without. A ton of schedule changes with kids sort of knowing what they have to do, the routines and. I'm sure there's an incredible amount of learner variability from the pandemic. So I'm not really referring to that, I'm not saying that the kids are necessarily at the level they need to be at. But in terms of just the feel of the building right now and, and the, the. Just the, the way that we were able to get kids into classes right away and just everybody to get their schedules and Aspen. Has been incredibly supportive and all that, it's just meant, made for, made for a very strong opening of the school year. A couple of things just to mention. Students are refilling their water bottles finally at Fowler using our hydration station, I know it seems like a little thing. Other schools may have them in every hall, but we, we have ours and we love it. Kids are totally able to self-regulate wearing their masks. And when they go outside to remove them, one of the things we've noticed is that when students are on a mask break. Probably less than half of them actually take their mask off. I would say the majority of students or somewhere around half prefer just to keep their mask on, I find myself keeping my mask on when I go outside. So it's just something, maybe it's a security thing, maybe it's just an uncomfort, discomfort with the potential of getting COVID or whatnot, but for whatever reason. I've noticed that children are remaining masked even when they have the option not to, even in the cafeteria after they're done eating. Band has returned to its full Fowler glory and in fact. Mr. Kozic was quoted saying one of the best band schedules he's ever had. In his time at Fowler, we have seventh and eighth grade band meeting together. So it's not a seventh grade and then maybe the next day you have the eighth graders. Mr. Kozic has the entire seventh and eighth grade together in, in the room, which is I, which I'm not sure has ever happened and it's so cool. Specials have been amazing, you should see what Mrs. Hatch has done to the library. Ms. Hayward was tremendous and left big shoes to fill, but Ms. Hatch has come in and filled those shoes. And the library is an extremely welcoming place right now. And rocking and rolling with the stuff that Ms. Hatch has planned for her, for her semester, her trimesters. Our academic classes have also started very strong, Brian and I walked around today. Everywhere we looked had, is dived in at this point to academics and curriculum, students are learning. There's still, you just still walk around and see to get to know you, the community building activities, but at this point now, day, day three, day four. You are seeing academics happening. We've had a great nine eleven memorial week with lots of things that we've done on the morning announcements. Brian and I stopped walking around the building today, I've seen it myself walking around the building with nine eleven activities. And we're flying a special flag this week at Fowler. And so it's just been, it's just been an important week in that regard and we've, we've, I feel like we've stepped up for that. Our attendance, I've noticed that attendance, I, I feel I would like to say to you that attendance is strong. I'm not sure I agree with that and I think we're gonna need to continue at Fowler to closely monitor attendance and to communicate with families. About the importance of sending your children to middle school. Our cafeteria and bus seating, we're working right now on getting our bus seating charts, drivers have been spoken to about that. And I've given them two weeks to get those seating charts in, it's very difficult for them to do that because they're so busy. Driving the bus and they only come to Fowler with only about, you know, five minutes to can't get on there and. And so they're working on that, but they, they know their marching orders need to do that, our cafeteria seating is done. I might have, you might have believed that only our sixth and eighth graders are the ones eating outside. But our fourth graders are also going to be eating outside starting Monday, we realized we can do that. It's not preferred, I'll be honest, but it is COVID times, when a student eats outside. They, they tend to come back inside a little bit more on the dysregulated side than, than if they're eating in the cafeteria. So certainly teachers would prefer that students would eat inside and just come back a little bit more calm, but. We'll monitor it as things go on, do what's best for the kids and right now, the best thing for the kids is obviously to be outside as much as possible. So the fourth graders will eat outside. We're gonna be beginning our assessments next week, so assessing our students in all of our grades using very, the various assessment tools we have. Working with our new MTSS team to, to make that happen and that's another thing that Mrs. Hatch has. Has offered a lot of support to. This year we prioritized academics in, in a small way, but we brought back what's called zones. And it's sort of a, I don't want to use the word study hall, but it's, it's a study hall on steroids, it's where. Students can get the help they need from teachers, they can, they, they can work on instructional tools, they can get. Get interventions by being pulled out, there's a lot of different things, but there's also time for students to just catch up on schoolwork. So there is that element to it and it's an exciting thing that we were able to put back in the schedule this year to really support our academics. Will be having our community meetings, which essentially is a fancy word of just saying grade level assemblies, starting tomorrow. Principals like to have those beginning of the year to just kind of set the expectations and also. Just make the students feel supported and remind them that this is their school and they want to have a, a good school, so let's, let's keep it that way. So I think those are kind of the notes I took. And, but just to follow Chuck, it has been a very, very strong start to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Robert.
Madam Chairman, I'm, I'm not gonna follow those two guys anymore because they're excellent speakers and. They basically said everything I'd like to say. We, I agree with everything that, what has been stated, let's go through the elementary school a little bit. We spent the first several days in order to just make sure that the kids felt. Acclimated to coming back to school, we made sure that they had opportunities in order to. Walk around the school, see the areas that they might not have been able to see, some students hadn't been in there all, at all throughout the year. We take the time in order to go through and meet the nurse and meet the office personnel and. Go through everything of that nature, so every student is, feels safe. We had our first grade level meeting last week with all the grades. Sitting down in the cafeteria in assigned seats, going over protocols and, and procedures. Making sure that they knew everybody and where they could go if they needed anything from the nurse or to the guidance department. And those went very well. Speaking about coming into school, I think the transportation company has been excellent, I spoke with them today. In regards to timing of the buses and we are very pleased and as they enter the school and as they exit the school. Students at this moment are being lined up in the cafeteria, I mean, sorry, in the gymnasium if they take the bus. We do have a lot of students that are taking the bus this year, on one particular bus, there's fifty-four students by itself on one, on one bus. But we also have people that come in from the Boys and Girls Club, we of course have the basic program that's, that students go to. So the elementary school is a very, very busy place, I think parents at this moment. Have been extraordinary, many of the parents you see them, we have a dropout off zone. For parents to drop off their kids, but at this moment, kids are, parents are dropping or bringing their kids right to the, to the lines, I think they're talking with the teachers. I think they're trying to feel. Really safe in, in what's going on, so we're, we enjoy that conversation, we think that is good, I think that opens us up to communication with the parents. We want them to understand that we're all partners in what we do, so as they drop off the kids, remember, some of these people, it's the first time they've ever dropped off a child. Whether it be preschool or kindergarten or whatever it may be, so I, we have plenty of staff out in order to assist. Parents for questions and anything going on. The, the lunch programs are going very, very well, the, the students are all under compliance. And, and wearing the masks, taking the breaks as they need them, they go out for recess to watch the kids just go out and play. Is probably one of the best times that we have an opportunity to go and see. So we have begun instructionally, we're beginning to do some testing, there's a lot of assessment that has to take place at the elementary school. We have thirty-seven L students this particular year, at the L school, there are. Assessments that have to be given to these students and seventeen of those students happen to be in kindergarten this year. So this is a process that takes place and Darwin does a superb job in doing so. We've also reached out and have assistance from the other L teachers from whether the middle school and or high school. So they're more community, they're more district L teachers and they're helping out in that, our MTSS, which, you know, Mike brought up. Has our, an amazing educational group, they have jumped in on every single piece and anything we need. But they too are going to be doing a DRA sweep of all the kids so we can use that data in order to. Create our lessons that we're going to be able to do, we, because we have four, we have actually three MTSS. Teachers, we also have a new Title One teacher, Ms. Boardman. And because of that, we have four new teachers that are with us, those people need. Care and time and to be able to do things and I believe our mentoring program is, that was established. Is also phenomenal, along with the team leaders have done a, a great job in working with these new teachers. They come with excitement, they come out of schools and they are prepared. We have a great relationship with Framingham State and others and so I'm gonna tell you is, and we are very happy with what we see there. We have several student teachers that are in with us this particular year from those colleges, Charles has done a, a great job of creating that atmosphere. And we will carry that on, I couldn't be happier with the opening of school. This is now my twenty-ninth year and it is my twenty-second year as an administrator. This year has gone extremely smooth in opening of a school. Students have come back and they're happy to be here and it is, they, it's not like they even missed a click. They're right on and I appreciate that, but I also appreciate the support that from the central administration and from other administrators. My other peers have been wonderful and whatever we have to do, so it's a very much of a team effort right across the district. And being in other districts, we're doing quite well, guys, I appreciate it, thank you for everything.
You're welcome, thank you very much, um, I think that due to the time, I'm gonna not do questions now. And if people have follow-up questions or comments for the individual principals. They can email them to me and then I'll give them to Brian to forward if that's okay with their, with the group. Brian, did you want to say something?
Me?
Yeah, I thought, I thought that you would, no.
Well, I would just thank the principals for their summaries and their comments regarding the opening of the school was successful and. If we could let the other administrators go, it's late, they get to work very early, so, and they'll be back right now in the morning.
Yes, I agree, Elizabeth, did you want to say something?
Nope.
Okay, yes, all right, thank you. All principals, thank you so much, I know that you guys have been like doing a lot of meetings this week, so thank, I really appreciate. All of the over or after hours time that you have, you've put in, so thank you so much for being with us and. Shut your screens off and go do something else because you don't need to be hanging out with us anymore.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Night.
Alrighty, now superintendent report.
I would just add, you could add Charles to that group too, for a guy who's been here all day.
Charles, do you want to go? You don't have to stay.
I just want to add, I just want to add one quick thing, we were, we were so privileged to hear that the fire chief said it was the best inspection of the. Three buildings that we've seen in years and years. Our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, our, all our administrators and the teachers of course. For just the attention they have given to safety and safety concerns during this year, it has been, people don't always know that, I keep saying. People don't know all the good things they're doing, but it's, there was some really good news, so thank you and good night.
Thank you, Charles. All right, Superintendent Haas.
Sure, I mean, a lot, so I tried to separate out the school, the superintendent report, so. We spent more time on the bowls tonight, so the superintendent report is really just a recap of some of the opening of schools, which you've already heard from the principals directly. There's COVID data on there, the, it's the most, at the time when I did it last, the end of last week, it was the most recent up-to-date data from Maynard from the state. And you can see there's some slight upticks in terms of the numbers of people getting vaccinated. Overall, at the end of last week, we're at seventy-three percent for the town, that's everybody, not just students. The highest percentage is clearly the fifty and older age bracket that has the highest vaccination rate. We, I should be able, next week, I'll be able to share more school specific and staff. Specific vaccination rates. And the other items on here, one would, the two other items, I think we've talked about this week several times, being CIC testing and. They are as responsive, responsive and they are capable of being right now. They're overwhelmed, it's a great plan, we prioritize stay, test and stay testing. And symptomatic testing and sort of put the continued COVID reporting or what used to be called pool testing. Sort of to tier two because we realize based on our call today with Desi. That they're a little overwhelmed CIC, so if we can prioritize what we're gonna do, we ordered tests, so. that they're a little overwhelmed CIC. So if we can prioritize what we're going to do, we ordered tests. So we actually have the kids here. We expected to hear from them, we did hear from them, but we expected a little bit more from them. We'll reach back out again tomorrow and see. They are still talking about the middle of next week being up and running. A little hesitant on that, which is why we didn't put that out there yet. But we, we were on a call, Jennifer and I were on a call with Russell Johnson and seven hundred other people from around the state. And they are confident that CIC has the capacity, they've done more hiring. They will work with us and we will have our testing up. We have about maybe a little bit higher now and I would anticipate, anticipate the number of people interested being much higher at the beginning of next week. We were at about four hundred people, district-wide, who want to participate in some level of testing, given the consent forms. We will send another message tomorrow to remind them about that. And some of them want to know a little bit more specifically about what is the protocol look like for test and stay or symptomatic testing. So we're waiting to hear from CIC to include that to send another message and a reminder. And along with that message, I will include the survey from for the SRO as well. They're gathering that data, two separate things, but they'll go in one message. And MSBA, I was last week, so I think I've told you, it's in the memo, but the walkthrough for the designer selection group was very successful. The OPM company was ecstatic with the quality and quantity of designers that showed up. There were more designers than order project managers. And several of them were the large firms that they would be looking to collaborate with. They were also, you know, a pretty wide variety. But I don't know, so anyway, they were very excited with those members at our next meeting. I'm sure that they will have that ready to share specifically who the companies were. So as the principal said, it's been a busy and challenging week, but all things considered, it was a very successful week. And you as a school can be, can be very proud of the administration, the principals, the buildings, the teachers. Given a hard beginning with COVID and then significant tragedy within the town of Maynard over the past four weeks and four subsequent incidents. They, you know, in baseball terms, they hit it out of the park. They have been supportive, they have been consistent. And as, you know, I've been in all the buildings, Jennifer's been in all of the buildings. Staff and kids, you wouldn't know it. You wouldn't even know we were in the middle of pandemic and there's so much unknown. They are solid. The teachers are, are, the kids are, they are super compliant with masks. Yeah, great start to the year.
That's awesome. That's great to hear. Thank you very much for that. And anything else or you good? Okay. Any comments from any of the members?
Got a question. Brian, the, in the conversations with CIS, is there any, or maybe you can clarify at a future point, a different testing for athletics? Like a take-home test or something when they're going like away games or whatever? I thought I read something like that, but I, there's so much info. Oh, I see Jennifer.
Jennifer?
So there is a protocol, if you are in a test and stay program. So if you've been identified as a close contact from within the schools and that five-day testing window extends over a weekend. And that weekend includes a school-sponsored event, like an athletic event or some other extracurricular, there is a take-home test that you can then take and then show the results to the athletic director, the coordinator, what have you. And so we're working through how all of that will
Okay.
factor in.
Okay. No, someone had asked me about it and I wasn't quite grounded. I know it hasn't been a prevalent point in our conversations, but it is a piece and I thought maybe it might be an FAQ at some point when it gets more information like how that.
Absolutely. Yeah, that will all be put forward. And then again, how that will.
I hadn't even thought about it really until I was asked.
Tests and how all of those things, we'll make sure that's out there.
Thank you.
All right.
I have, so I just, could you? I am also very tired. And so I just want to make sure that I understand the testing all the way. So if I heard it right, what you said is that they're overwhelmed. CIC is, and but they still say the middle of next week, but potentially that will be that testing will be online potentially by next week, the middle of next week will be the kind of testing that we will, they will do if someone is showing symptoms. But potentially, they will not be ready to do the pool testing by then. Am I having, do I have that right?
All right.
Okay, okay, good. All right. And also, sorry, one more thing. And how are you putting that in some kind of s'more to people know when it's going to start?
Still a little more. Yep, great question. And we're really waiting for a little more specifics from them tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And we will send the message tomorrow. So really, the majority of the message is written. We're waiting for a little bit of information from them. Round it out.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
We good? All right. Thank you, Brian. And next we have the chair report. It's just going to be quick. Denise Hatch reached out to me and Colleen today and she's homesick. Otherwise she would be doing, she would be here presenting to us, but she has received some donations, two hundred and fifty dollars from the American Legion and two hundred dollars from the AL auxiliary. The money was used, it it helped to fund, she had a wish list for books that commemorate the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven. And with the money that was donated, she was unable to purchase all of the books that she wanted for her students. And we need to vote to approve, to accept and approve the donations. So if are there.
Do you have any information on like the?
What the titles were?
No, just the, to be could, like, is there like a email or something we can refer to in in the, in the motion?
Weren't they all related to nine eleven?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that somewhere.
I can give an overview. And also Denise Hatch is on the call. I don't know if she, if she feels that she can speak, can ask her to unmute herself. But essentially, these are all books that are picture books. They range from, oh, Denise, you have it muted. So do you want to go ahead and explain?
Ah, sorry, I would, I would put my video on, but I've been sick, so.
It's okay.
Very pretty. So yeah, so I just wanted to say that Nicole Carlin, a parent, I reached out to her and I was telling her that I really wanted to make sure that there were books in the library for teachers, a lot of picture books and age-appropriate for elementary books around nine eleven to commemorate the twentieth anniversary. And she helped connect me with the American Legion and the American Legion Auxiliary Committee, Committee, I guess it's called. To, she said, put together a wish list, which I did. And they funded the entire wish list, which was way beyond what I expected. So I was just really appreciative. That helped me to organize some resources and activities, et cetera, for the school to complete this week without me, because I've been sick all week. But so anyways, that I just wanted to say that the teachers came down, I set up a display and a sign out for teachers to come and borrow the books to use with their classes and they will all be entered into the library circulation.
But the donation from the American Legion Auxiliary Committee. And what was the amount again? Just so we can.
So from, oh, sorry, Denise, go.
The American Legion Post two thirty-five Maynard donated two hundred and fifty dollars. The American Legion two thirty-five unit two thirty-five in Maynard. The auxiliary donated two hundred dollars, so a total of four hundred and fifty dollars.
Two hundred, okay.
Yeah, and I got multiple copies of some of the picture books that I knew were really popular with teachers. And then I bought some chapter books and you know, a range of books for, for students and staff. Which staff was very appreciative of.
And I believe one of the books, very specifically, was referenced on WBUR today. The Man with the Red Bandana, Denise, I believe, was that one. So I mean, Denise did an amazing job identifying books that are not only relevant for the anniversary, but also regionally relevant as well and created some really amazing choice activities for students and staff that we were able to replicate throughout the district. So I really want to thank Denise for all of her efforts in making sure that we were able to successfully recognize this anniversary appropriately.
Thank you, Denise.
Denise, do you still want me to read the note that you sent to me to read for both Nicole and Mara?
Um, sure. I was also going to mention that the Maynard Anti-Racism Alliance, I think that's what, how it said. Donated some books like last spring and over the summer to each of the school buildings. I don't know like the exact amount. I don't know if it was a number. I can't quite remember, but I have a box that hasn't been processed yet under my desk of books from them. But it was to each of the buildings, so each library. So so you could read, you could read the note if you wanted to, but that was the other.
Well, let's, let's vote to approve or accept and approve the donations and then I'll read the thank you notes.
And I will be sending out, you know, hard copy thank you.
Yes.
Somebody as well. Just, I wanted to.
Denise, what was the other Legion? It was post two thirty-five and what was the other one? Yeah, I'm sorry, I deleted what I typed.
One of them is the auxiliary and the other, one was the American Legion and the Sec two thirty-five. And then the other was the American Legion Auxiliary Unit two thirty-five.
Auxiliary, okay. Actually, they're both two thirty-five. Okay.
Yeah, both from Maynard, yes.
Got it. Thank you. And then the total was from
Four hundred and fifty.
Four fifty. Got it. That's right. Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion that we accept, oh, sorry. Nope, I was going to say, go for it, Natasha. Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the donations totaling four fifty from the American Legion two thirty-five and the Auxiliary Unit two thirty-five.
I can second.
Okay, discussion. Roll call, Hillary Griffiths. We couldn't hear you. I saw that you said yes, but for the record, okay, Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. So that has been accepted and approved. I'm now going to read the note. The first one is to Nicole Carlin. A big thank you to Nicole Carlin for coordinating donations commemorating the twentieth anniversary of September eleventh. Mrs. Carlin reached out to the American Legion Post two thirty-five Maynard and the American Legion Auxiliary Unit two thirty-five Maynard. Both organizations done, donated funds to purchase all of the books about nine eleven on my wish list. Thanks so much to all. And then for Mara, a huge thank you to the Maynard Anti-Racism Alliance Committee for the book donations of diverse titles to all three school libraries. Holly Blomster, Karen Ross and Elizabeth Albota were instrumental in coordinating the book drive. Thank you to the entire committee for supporting the school libraries. And I would like to extend a thank you to Nicole and to Mara. And thank you, Elizabeth, for helping with that.
Do we need to also, I guess, realize the accepted the books? I don't know.
The problem is, is I, I, I don't know what the value of them is, so I'm going to.
Accept the book donation. Do we just, by procedural, we just can leave it general?
Yeah, I guess we could do that. Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I thought we needed the dollar amount.
I'll make a motion that we accept donated books from Mara Committee to Maynard Public School Libraries through their book drive.
Okay, second.
I can second.
Okay.
I think Hillary keeps trying to, I know.
Okay, discussion. All right, Hillary Griffiths.
Yes.
There we go, Elizabeth Albota.
Do I abstain?
You can.
Okay, I guess I'm staying just in case.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. All right. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Denise. And thank you, Mara and Elizabeth.
Feel better, Denise.
Yeah, thank you, Nicole out there.
Okay. The next item is we are now going to move on to subcommittee reports. Starting with Mary Branley.
So first, I just want to, and you know, this is after the principals left, but just reiterate what a great job the high school did in the remembrance on Monday night for Ronan. It was quite incredible and, and the outpouring from the community was pretty incredible. He just wanted to hug all of the kids that were there. So anyway, so that's number one. Number two is just the Susan Erickson and myself met with Brian this week with the master plan. And we had questions to ask him and it was, it was great. So now we'll go back to the master plan. Most of the items that were on our to-do list, we're already doing. So that's pretty amazing. So so that's where we are with that.
Great. Thanks, Mary. Is that all?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, next I have Hillary Griffiths.
Um, so obviously the policy subcommittee met yesterday and discussed the mask protocol. The new diversity, equity and inclusion subcommittee has scheduled our first meeting for September thirtieth at four P M. And I attended the safety committee meeting today and heard updates from each of the schools and the high school nurse with regards to their safety plans. It sounded like a lot of work has gone into crisis planning and things are going well. And that they have specific areas that they're going to work on firming up in the next week or so. It also sound like, sounded like they had really effective fire drills that the fire department was happy with today. And I also really appreciated hearing that the schools were being flexible with their plans. So they had mentioned that at the high school, they had initially thought they didn't need a separate COVID sick room. And then today they decided they did and they made one today. So that made me feel comfortable that they were make assessing things on and making changes as they went. And then I just want to say, I really appreciated the efforts by the administrators and particularly the high school staff with help from Fowler staff to help the children and staff deal with grief and loss. And then I particularly appreciated that they're intentionally prioritizing the students' well-being over things like homework this week and are aware of how needs can change as time comes. So I just appreciate that.
Great. Thank you, Hillary. Natasha.
Um, so the budget subcommittee, we met last week. We will be meeting next week, the week after. And a couple of things we talked about were about getting the final numbers for FY twenty-one available for the subcommittee, I mean, for the school committee. Wayne will be reporting out to us in the next couple of meetings at some point. We talked about the policies, about financial policies, the planning for FY twenty-three. There's a policy about the calendar. So we introduced those discussions, clock center. And so I'll, again, I'll send those over. But those will be ongoing discussions, hoping with recommendations we'll get from Brian and Wayne to help inform our conversations. Mary and I talked about, we had suggested to Brian and Wayne to consider the task force regarding the fields, which we had talked about as a board before anyway, but because we, they have these, all these stakeholders and actually at our meeting, a Maynard Youth Soccer had someone who came and spoke and gave a comment as well. I know it has come up at the Recreation Committee. So I think, and also I, I went to the select board meeting last night and it came up just as well there because they were approving something for the fireworks and they felt like you know, maybe it was not under their purview, you know, because it was the back of the Green Meadow Field. And so there's just a lot of conversation and also about fees associated with the use of fields. They don't normally charge fees. So I think that it's just a conversation that requires some tweaking. So look forward to hearing more about that. And I know Mary was going to, because Mary knows everybody in Maynard was going to be helping putting together some stakeholders list. Because there's, actually even at the select board meeting last night, there were, there were somebody out, they were confused, like all the different softball or, you know, teams that can play. There's a lot of people. Um, there's a lot of people that really, you know, use our fields. And so just getting some structure and understanding to help inform us in the future. Um, but there's needs to be a change in, in fee structure or whatever for, for that and also scheduling. The other part too that came up, uh, we didn't really discuss too deeply, but it was talked about was athletic uh, fees. And how that is a need that needs to, a need that needs to also be addressed. And um, we didn't really land on a, a path forward, but we've all gotten, you know, feedback recently. Um, and I will say I've gotten private messages and I just wanted, this might be a, a good point. So I think one of the conversations that has come up, and we've gotten an email, but I've got separately was the, there is a change in the fee structure. I think that has communicated for, to parents last year to what is posted on the website or in the handbook possibly for, for Fowler this year. And that doesn't seem to be something that the school committee could be a typo. But I would, I would say that it could be reflective, if they're, Brian, maybe this is a takeaway to look at the, what was shared last year. There's a change in the fee and I think families are a little upset about it. Um.
And then the other part. Discussed it today, Brian, can you want to answer?
I just want to add, I want to add one more thing also to that conversation though, which may, also you may have information on. Um, is the other part is, as um, there's a belief that the sixth graders don't also need to pay fees. Um, because sixth graders are doing softball. And I don't know if that's a miscommunication that needs to be cleared up. Because I know that sixth grade hasn't always done sports. And so now that we've expanded it, doesn't mean that they're exempt, I think. But I think that just, that's the other confusion. Um, I know Maynard youth soccer had, people quit. Their sixth grade soccer because they thought that Maynard wasn't going to charge them athletic fees. Um, and now there, so there's a bit, there's a little bit of a, it's uh, some confusion there. So anyway, go ahead, sorry.
No, and we will work to clarify that. I mean, clearly there's a consistent message that people don't want to pay to use the fields, nor do they want to pay athletic fees. Everybody wants everything for free, which I can appreciate. We just can't function that way.
Right.
In terms of what was on the website, I, if I recall, last year, we did modify the fees because we had limited seasons. Especially for the middle school kids, they really didn't have full options. So we reduced the fees for the spring season. Um, and that was it. And then it reverted back to normal for this year. And there may be some page on the website that we missed. When we transferred to the new system. Uh, but we will work to make sure that it's cleaned up and we will communicate that with parents. So it's clean. And I will also share with you tomorrow, uh, we did a quick. Um, assessment of our activity fees in comparison to about six or eight surrounding towns and where we rank. Um, how much we charge, what you get for that. And it turns out, I mean, the short story is, we're a great deal. We aren't messaging it well, but we are a great deal. Um, in terms of other towns and what you get. And especially if you're in a family of two or three kids and they are all doing something, um, whether it's sports or activities. So I have included, I will include that in the Friday memo that I send you tomorrow. So you can review it and then we can talk about that again as well.
Okay, so the, the takeaway is, sixth graders will have to pay fees if they're participating in athletics, that they're not exempt. And uh, I think maybe the confusion is, and this could totally be me not realizing that, I don't think that this. This, we talk about it as a board, that there would be a change in athletic fees.
I'm going back through the minutes trying to find where we discussed it because I want to be able to show the parents where that was discussed.
Okay, so I think the problem is that maybe and when it wasn't understood that it's going, reverting back to the original. Like it was a temporary reduction. I think that's the context that probably is being missed. Um, and it could just be that when it was shared last year, maybe people didn't understand that, um, because of that. So that's helpful to um, to clarify that we, it was really a one-time reduction, but really we're going, reverting, it was a temporary consideration. Um, okay, great. And then the other update that I had was from the select board um, meeting. Just reporting back, they adopted an anti-racism uh, statement. There's a couple of other updates there. I won't go into the, but the, the highlights. Um, they did adopt one um, which um, was reviewed and discussed last night, which is great. Um, they adopted the article for the budget. There was no um, change in for Maynard. Uh, the Maynard Public Schools anyway. Um, and the um, Hannah Porter, who is the ambassador, the three fifty-one ambassador. Um, she and um, her mom spoke, they have a presentation, they're doing this um, memorial rock garden. Um, they got approval from the select board. So that will also be in commemoration for nine eleven. It'll be Saturday. Um, they're doing, and so it's part of like a girl scout, but also her project. And she was really phenomenal when she spoke. Um, you know, the select board really appreciated. I mean, she just, she's a very great, she's a wonderful role model for her peers and for others. So I just wanted to highlight and give kudos to, to that work that she's um, she's doing. And that's all I got.
Alright, thank you Elizabeth. She needs to be unmuted, Colleen, please.
But you're still muted. Don't talk, I can hear you.
Thank you. Um, as, as uh, as uh, Hillary said, we have an upcoming B E I meeting on the thirtieth, which is very exciting. Um, uh, Mary and I also have a subcommittee meeting on Thursday for the policy and, I'm sorry, not policy. Again, for the strategy and communication subcommittee, which is also nice. I'm not sure I said yet that we did meet once in that subcommittee. Um, and that we have started thinking through some of the um, some of the strategy we want to implement over the upcoming year. Um, but we, you know, it was only an hour meeting and we have a lot more to dig into, um, which I'm excited to do. Um, so that's, that's the subcommittee stuff. And I just have a, a question I have just for the school committee now is. Are we going to get a student member sometime soon?
So that happens, that doesn't usually happen until like late September or early October. Because the school council has to organize and they have to elect and then select someone and then. Um, and last year, I don't think we got one until probably like January or February because they're just. It, it was because of COVID, it was crazy. So, yeah, um, we will find out, yes, Brian?
And I think we want to do it a little bit differently than we did last year. Last year, we sort of just had different students volunteer to come. Some were a little more prepared than others, nicely stepped in, in the middle of the pandemic. But uh, I think the plan is to have a student advisory group at the high school and then have them elect who's going to come to the school committee meeting. And they really become a member of the school committee, but a non-voting member. So it's a little bit more of a serious role. Something that they in fact could put on like a college application. It's a little bit more of a governmental experience, if you will.
Good, that's what I'd hope for. That's good. And that'd be more useful to us too. So I'm really glad.
Good. Part of it last year too, Elizabeth, some of the feedback I got was the students were, they were a little. I guess it's easier for them to come and speak to us in person because it's not being broadcast all over the place. And they were a little anxious about talking on Zoom to a bunch of people they didn't know and um, so there was that anxiety as well. So.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay. Um, and the last question I have is, um, and this is just procedural. Um, we did talk in our workshop about having the, the staff who present go first. But I noticed we didn't do that tonight. We had another cut in the middle. And I was just wondering if we're um. We're not going to do the thing where we have the staff go first, or if we just need to be more mindful of that in the future.
Um, well, I think. I. I'll let Brian speak because he's the one who added it to the agenda.
Okay.
I'd say yes, be more mindful. I do love it when the principals and the teachers or the students come. Um, and I agree, we just need to be mindful about front-loading that agenda and making it work that way. It's, we're, it's definitely a work in progress, just redoing the agenda so we can get them, so they can be done by seven thirty. I feel off that they're here until nine, unless they want to stay in here as banter back and forth, and that's okay. But to your point, I will be more mindful of that.
Um, that's what I got.
Okay, um. Well, then, we need to approve the minutes. So, without objection. I would like to find my agenda so that I can.
Oh, I just want to make a note, it was Hannah Peters, sorry, correction. I'm like totally tired on Hannah Porter, I said Hannah Porter. Hannah, I know who the, she is. I just exhausted, um, and read my notes wrong. So Hannah Peters, Hannah, her mom, sorry, our ambassador.
Okay. Um, alright, so, meeting minutes. Without objection, I would like to approve the minutes from six, three, twenty-one, six, seven, twenty-one, and six, fifteen, twenty-one. There were some grammatical and content um, corrections. And I think it's late and I'm not interested in going through all the content corrections. So I um. If there's, Colleen, are there any that have just grammatical edits?
I am looking.
Okay, I will look too.
Computer's running slow.
Six, three is like pretty much just grammar, a little bit of wording, but nothing like major. And.
Yeah, it's just more grammar and context.
Yeah, so maybe six, three, we accept with edits. Without objection, Lydia with grammar.
Um, what about six, fifteen?
Yeah.
I don't see any in six, fifteen.
Okay.
You all like that?
But six, seven.
Well, even six, seven doesn't really have anything.
It's more context and tense versus content.
Right.
Oh, yeah, well, if it's, that's grammatical, so.
Grammatical.
Yeah.
Think we could do all three of them.
I think we can do all three. So without objection, I would like to accept uh, uh, approve the minutes from six, three, twenty-one, six, seven, twenty-one. Six, fifteen, twenty-one with grammatical um, edits. No objection. Alright, they are approved. Next, we have acceptance of warrants. Without objection, I would like to accept warrant twenty-two dash zero zero four. Alright, no objections. That is accepted. We are now going to adjourn to executive session M G L. Thirty, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, reason seven to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law. Or federal grant in aid requirements. And specifically, we will be reviewing. The meeting minutes from last year and um, whether or not to release them.
So I, I don't know if you want, I, I posted the agenda that adjournment is after. Because if you do request to release any, that has, that vote has to be an open session, but you can carry that vote to next meeting.
Let's carry the vote to next meeting.
So you have to state if you don't plan on returning.
Okay, so what, wait, what do I say?
Are we planning on returning or not?
We are not. No, we will not be returning to open session and we will um. Hold on to that vote until the twenty-third. So, uh, roll call vote to adjourn into executive session. Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
Yes, Jeff, you can go. You buggered right out of there. Alright, Hillary Griffiths.
Yeah.
Jennifer, are you going too? Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you Jennifer.
Uh, uh.
Hi Carol.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
And Lydia Clancy, yes. Okay, good night Carol. Good night Jennifer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Think that's it.
Yeah, no more recording.
No more recording.
Oh, hold on, no.